I'm going to call the meeting to order. Did I see Councilmember Hondros? Councilmember Hondros, can't start without you. With you, I do. All right, so if I could call on Councilmember here, would you please do the invocation?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Everyone, let's go to the Lord in prayer. Dear Lord Jesus, first, just thank you, Lord. Thank you for a good morning. Thank you for a good sleep, a safe sleep, for the family and the neighborhood and the city. Lord Jesus, we thank you for giving us life, health, and strength to be able to serve our citizens well. As we move forward today, through our session, our work session of budget, we ask your Father to let our minds be open and keen and alerting to the point of everything that we hear, and let us be able to give some good, positive input where it may be needed. And, Lord, we just thank you. We glorify you, and we ask you for calmness and peace as we move forward in Jesus' name. Everyone, please say amen.
All right, if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we do the approval of the agenda, I do want everyone to know that we have Councilmember Member Banks McLachlan on the line. Can you hear us, Councilmember?
Yes, Mayor Protem, good morning.
Good morning. Okay, so if I could get a motion to approve the agenda? All right, I have a motion by Councilmember here, second by Councilmember Green. All those in favor? Please vote. Maybe, maybe not. No worries. Okay, let's all hit our button. Councilmember Banks McLachlan?
Green.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Items of business, we will go to 5.1 Budget Chronicles, questions and answers. Do we have you, Mr. Redding? To do that? Perfect timing.
Morning, Mayor. Mayor Protem, Council. I'm Brooke Redding, Senior Assistant City Manager. So this morning, you're going to hear from several departments involved in public safety operations and the city's broader public safety strategy. The goal of this presentation is to give you a clear view of what's currently funded, what's being proposed, and to answer questions you may have, particularly as they relate to a direction from the May 5th meeting on technology. Your first, your first year briefings from Office, Community Safety, Fire Department, Police Department. Following that, it'll be Mr. Jerry Clip talking about safety of salaries and proposed compensation study. And then Ms. Sheila Thomas Ambat and Mr. Byron Reeves will present stormwater funding and fee model changes you previously requested. So we worked across many departments to prepare for this presentation. We're here to support you with answers and details wherever you need it. To begin this morning's presentation, I'll turn it over to our Budget Director, Ms. Kimberly Leonard, and she will walk you through the Budget Chronicles. And just to orient you to the room, there's a whiteboard that's not displaying the parking lot. That's in the back of the packet that's on your table, as there's a myriad of items, and new items will be placed on that parking lot today. Ms. Kimberly?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So to address a few of the questions that you had, I'm just going to go down the list. I think there's 21 questions. The first one is, what is the dollar amount of the projected expenditures for police IT improvements? There was 4 million, 4.2 million in total of improvements recommended. It includes 1.4 million for radio upgrades and additional consulates, 100,000 for public safety video data storage and analysis, and 2.6 million for the Axiom contract, and 82,000 for the camera migration. Second question, what dollar amount was allocated for Mazarick Park? Yes, I don't like to stay put. There was 100,000 reserved for Mazarick Park resurfacing last year, and then there was another 190,000 added for '26. Third question, what is the average value of the current house in the city of Fayetteville since the 2025 revaluation? And that would be 246,500. What is the dollar amount allocated in '26 for street markings? There was 200,506 dollars in the '26 budget for marking 10.8 miles of streets. The remarkings, as my understanding, are only done when the streets are resurfaced. So there's a resurfacing miles also. Five, how much is FY '25 budget for neighborhood street signage? 50,000 has been budgeted for neighborhood improvements. As of May 20th, 75,000 was included in the current budget, but there's 45,000 remaining out of that now. How much is the Loosely budget, and where is it posted? That is posted in Solid Waste Enterprise Fund and is funded, yes, and is funded through the solid waste fees, and the current cost of that is about 342,000.
All right, so we'll pause as you're running through this. It's generating some questions, so I'll go to Councilmember here, and then I had a question.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Two, three of these are some concerns I had. As we look at item, question four, maybe I'm looking at, which one is for the street markings?
That's number four.
Number four, okay. I did want Council to consider adding additional funding for that. I was hoping maybe we could go an additional 100, putting it out there for conversation. As more, as I continue to go to my community meetings, a lot of seniors are always talking to me about turning lanes from one road to another, and they really need that, those lines. It helps to guide them, and I have already reached out to the Department of Transportation for support, and so I'm getting, I'm getting feedbacks, or what my court, so that would be one of my concerns, if we could consider an additional 100.
Jennifer, we have a process that we can capture some of the recommendations, so we can, you know, then we can tally them all together at the end of everything. So Councilmember here, if you can just make whatever, those kind of points, we'll capture.
Okay, now, so that's what it is for number four, and I know we need to look at budget as far as when it's done. If we're going to wait 18 years before we strike the streets again, that's just not good. I think that's where we are now, 18 years. Question five is another concern that I had, and what would, tell me then, because there's some some balances that are still there with what is allotted for this year. Okay, it's 45,000, then what is the full budget for '25, '26? What would that be?
50,000 for '26.
Then my request for that, which I sent out to everyone already, was to make that 100,000 requests. But if you all want more, I have no problem with that for our street neighborhood signs. It really does give a lot of input and support and uplift to to communities. And also-
I'm sorry.
And ma'am, you want to respond to that one before I go to the next?
I was just going to say, it looks like there'll probably be funds left from the previous year to roll forward.
Right, that's what I was asking for. That's why I was asking. Yes, ma'am, okay. And in question one, one of my concerns was drones and doorbell camera allotment, which will probably be within the micro grants, which I have asked for in addition. I guess we're going to, I already saw it in our big packet, but haven't seen it in this part, but I would also like that to be considered as some of the expenditures to go to some of these items as far as technology goes. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, may I clarify that last night request? Was it for micro grants or for what? You said micro grants, but then you were talking about-
Oh, I was just saying, because I know that I brought that up in the micro grant piece, but I already see on the, your PowerPoint for today, that is at 130. I didn't know if that 130 was what is previously asked for, that's already in the budget, because I wanted 200,000 to be added to that.
That was your request, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Councilmember here. So I did have a couple of questions on, because you kind of rattled off the answers to our questions, which kind of generated more questions, so maybe you can address that. In the police budget, I'm wondering today, with us bringing, announcing the new chief in a week, making the decisions about what's funded and the requests, obviously carried over from the previous or the interim administration, how are we able to capture if the new chief comes in and says, hey, I'm missing, or I would, I would need X or Y for that? What's the process to address that? Because we're going to be making a decision about a budget, but then we're asking.
I think Dr. Hewitt wants to answer that.
Mayor, thank you. That's part of, I think, what we may have discussed a little bit yesterday as well. We hope to make the announcement for the chief soon. I, in talking to them and to the police department, I don't think there's much that is in the recommended items that Council discussed at the special meeting, was it two weeks ago? That the chief would find objectionable. And we have in just a moment, some information about the implementation of what that would look like. Some of the things, even if they were funded, may not necessarily be able to go in in 30, 60, 90 days, such as cameras and other things like that, just for programming and planning. But my hope would be that, and we do have programmed in the base budget, the recommended budget already, opportunities for the chief or whomever else to come back in, let's say in October after 30, 60, 90 days, and to have done an evaluation, say, I'd like to do 1, 2, 3. So there is some flex in the existing budget, but clearly Council has identified items in question one, and we'll be covering that next on, after we finish the Budget Chronicle items. But yes, sir, that would be my request of y'all, is that y'all save a little bit for the chief to come back in after they've made an opportunity, have made their assessment to say what first, second, or third they would recommend we move forward.
Save a little bit, add a little bit, one or two, I get it. Because I think some of that came up in the small conversations about, you know, some of the questions were, what would you do? How would you address technology? And there were things that were not captured here, so I definitely think, I just want the Council to be mindful of that. The resurfacing you had on here, 100 was reserved for, is another 190. How many courts will that cover, and does that address resurfacing of all of them? Because I was told it was a $300,000 number, 350 roughly. This has been an ongoing request by the citizens for like-
Where's Gibson?
Number of years, so what does, you know, does 190 cover half? Does it cover a third?
Well, we did, courts at Lake Rim, and I think we did two for 90.
Mazarick particularly.
And we have a total of 12 courts outside of Lake Rim.
Yes, good morning, Mayor. Hey, glad you could join us this morning.
Council, the, the funding that Kimberly is talking about does Mazarick one. Those are older courts, that'll be eight of them. And then we're working on a plan for Tokay to get those done also. And that'll have all the resurfacing as well as the new courts at the tennis center, so everything will be done.
Does this have enough in this 290, or is it, is in this 290 to do all of that? You're saying you're working on a plan for Tokay and the others, so does this have enough? So 290 fixes all that?
No, 290 fixes Mazarick.
Okay, and do you have cost analysis for the others?
Tokay is about 230. And do we have a funding strategy for that that we're exploring? Yes, we are exploring that. We should have an answer on that by the end of the week.
Exploring it like what, grants or?
No, talking to ECD.
Okay, all right. All right, and the last question I have is kind of follows up on Councilmember here's comment about the street resurfacing. Probably Ms. Sheila. Yeah, so the rating of our streets, you know, I know I've watched it over time. It was every 40-year at one time, we increased it, got it down, cut it in half, and our rating improved. Where is our rating at this, at this time? And this is 200,000 for 10 miles of resurfacing. Does that have any impact on our rating, or this is just a marking?
Either one of you.
Because part of the infrastructure conversation was that we had ratings, we wanted to cut down our cycle of resurfacing from every 40 years to 20. So Byron, can you speak to that? Because I want to make sure that the, and how much of the infrastructure bond is, has, has increased that? Same question like we did on the sidewalks.
Okay, so pertaining to question four, I'll try to take it a couple of different ways. The street markings, you'll see there's 200,506. That is the striping that is going to go into the streets that we resurface. There's also included in that 200, there's 40 that is in our operating budget that I think go to the concerns that Mr. here was speaking of, your markings that have faded and things like that. So that's what number four is. When you talk to the resurfacing, it's what the GO bond that has gone toward resurfacing the past two fiscal years and what we're proposing this year is a little over 14 and a half million dollars that we've done towards resurfacing.
Is that addition to what we were already budgeting with Powell Bill and all of that?
Correct. With the GO bond, we've been able to resurface a little over two times as many roads as we normally would, with, with just Powell Bill funds. So when you speak about the rating of the street as far as the overall network rating, when we did our pavement condition survey back in 2022, what that survey said was essentially, just to maintain the current overall network, you had to do about $10 million a year. We, we're not doing that. So the overall-
How much are we doing? Roughly?
Well, it's changed because in '23, we did a lot with the GO bond. For proposing for '26, we've got a little over four and a half from Powell Bill and other pay and loo funds, and then almost $4 million in GO bond funds, so that's eight and a half.
So we're doing eight and a half, we need to be doing 10 to keep-
That is what our, that's what our pavement condition survey said that you needed to do to maintain the current PCI value for the overall.
All right, last question, as you do to striping, does that include the crosswalks and pedestrian crossways? Because we're, I just started, Council, I don't know if you've driven around lately, but a lot of them are faded, and you see a lot of people just crossing wherever, and I know we, we're trying to get better behavior, but we need to have it more prominent. So does that include that?
It, it does. I'll give a good example. We are about to start paving Sycamore Dairy Road and McPherson Church Road. You can see a lot of those lines have faded. It'll all be striped back, crosswalk striped back and everything after it's-
All right, thank you. All right, so Councilmember Hondros and Thompson, and then here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we're kind of focusing in, digging down on this. If I could take it back up to the 10,000-foot level for a second, and Mr. Yates isn't here, but maybe Ms. Leonard could answer this question. Out of our total proposed budget and the projections from ad valorem taxes, from the revenue neutral number, I think was 3.895 per hundred dollars of value, and the proposed, in this proposed budget was 44.95, is that correct? So we're essentially talking about six cents, and then each, each penny of ad valorem tax was approximately 2,350,000, correct? So we're talking about 13, 14 million dollars. And also, the sales tax methodology or formula has changed, correct? And that projected loss is 13 million?
If you just look at the sales tax loss from the previous year is 3.1 million, but then there's, there's so many various ways of looking at it, and if you calculate the growth that we would have captured and all the other numbers, I don't remember off the top of my head, but that sounds about right.
Yeah, I remember in, I don't know what page it's on, but in our budget book, I remember the 13 million dollar figure, if my memory is certainly correct. I just say that to say, and also, Ms. Leonard or maybe Manager Hewitt, what's the Powell Bill funding amount that we've been receiving from the state?
It's around seven.
Seven million dollars. I just say that to say, you know, we're talking about the resurfacing, which is largely where our power bill funding, what we invested that in was repaving. I know we're sensitive with the new home values or tax assessed values on real property of being cognizant of the ad valorem tax rate. As we're talking about adding all this stuff, we can't, it's difficult, it's going to be challenging to reduce the ad valorem tax rate and add all this stuff in, and I would just wanted to remind us all of that. And when we talk about some things, I'll just take one that was mentioned today as an example, was the, the community signs, neighborhood signs. I think all of us have beneficiaries of that in our districts where they, they're popular, they're good. I think it makes our city aesthetically pleasing, better quality of life and all those things, and that's great. But I think last year in the budget, the proposed budget was 50 grand, and we, Council, increased that to 75 grand. Staff is telling us out of 75 grand, only 45 grand was used. So we can up it to 100 grand or 200 grand or a million, but my concern or reservation is we're earmarking funds that could be used elsewhere for funds that we're not going to use. If the demand is only 45,000, funding at 50, I think is adequate, and then if those funds are, are expended, we can do a budget appropriation next year because we have a lot of competing priorities, so we can't fund everything. So I, I just want us to be cognizant of that.
All right, thank you. And can you speak, before I go to Councilmember Thompson, can you speak to the reimbursement? You know, we talked about the growth, but the county signed something to reimburse us on the growth, or at least 50% of the growth. Can you speak to that? Has that been calculated in here?
I can't speak to that right now, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Um, yes, um, how the sales tax reimbursements work, the money comes to us and then we would be remitting or cutting checks back to the county. And so I think in the proposal that was approved, and we sent over our, if I remember, was it one point six million dollars that we cut the check for to send over? I think that, how that works is that we won't have to remit to them the three point four from the true-up of those last quarters, or we would true it up at fifty fifty percent. But that's essentially money that we didn't send to them that we're able to retain on this side.
Same.
And that money is, um, is in the budget. And if you, if you and I had talked about that as well at one time, that if, I think your proposal was to capture whatever that was, to set aside for some special fund for economic development, whatever. And if that's the case, then that money is in the budget, is programmed, is part of everything else. But if, if, if you want to pull that out and say, I specifically want to take that money that we would not have paid to the county as part of the sales tax and annexation agreement, then that would be something we could put on the board to say, we want to pull out that money for a purpose.
Well, the only reason I brought up is, you know, well, I'll talk about that when we get to that point. I don't want to belabor this today, but I just wanted us to know all of the nuances. But Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to comment on a couple of things that were said, and, uh, I'm going to regurgitate some of the things you said, Mr. Mayor, and some of the emails that you sent out to us. But last night, I was fortunate enough to be able to go to the out front event we had last night at, at the Dorothy Gilmore Center, and a lot of the residents talked about safe city. We have to do all we can to make sure that we are a safe city. And they mentioned sidewalks, and they mentioned markings, and they mentioned repaving. And I think Byron explained it very well, that's why I asked him to stand back up there again, because, uh, Mr. Mayor, you sent us out an email about us moving forward with a lot of our sidewalks by moving four million dollars so we can be up to that standard. I did not know that there was a, a, a level that we had to be at when it came to repaving of an estimate of ten million dollars, so we need to make that mark. It was mentioned about repay, uh, 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 markings on the roads. Uh, well, when it comes to DOT roads, I'm in contact with Mr. Andrew Barstel to make sure that we get those crosswalks in front of Seventy First School Road where they're not putting sidewalks in. The same thing that we can do on major roads like Murchison Road, or Skyborough Road. But Byron, if you can, can you come up here and, and tell us about the, the improvements that you're doing with the twenty eighteen pedestrian plan and how we're moving forward with some of these pavings and mark?
Yeah, I'll try to remember, remember what I said last night.
You'll have to say it for a baby.
All right, um, so between grant funding and the general obligation bond, we will complete all of the remaining projects that were in the twenty eighteen pedestrian plan. With the, the resurfacing, I think we had, pull my notes right here. We'll be resurfacing almost forty additional miles with the, the geo bond funds, like I said earlier, a little over two times as many roads as what we've been able to do in the past. I think that was it with the
About the markings, you, you had a, a video of the markings, the bicycle markings that you was
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. So we also, uh, the, the three major areas of, of focus for the public infrastructure geo bonds were sidewalks, resurfacing, and then bike lanes. And so we've got bike lanes on Coventry now, we've got bike lanes up on McGilvery Street that we just resurfaced. So we do have a couple more projects where we're putting bike lanes on, but we're waiting until the street gets resurfaced to do that. So we are putting those bike lanes down as well.
So I, I just wanted to mention, Mr. Mayor, a lot of things are being done with additional funding, so we can still move that mark, that arrow a little bit further.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am?
I also want to note that, as you were informed, our last analysis indicated that we needed about ten million dollars to keep at the current rating.
Yes.
And we've previously utilized the power bill funds, which is about six to seven million. And that's the only monies that we have received for repaving. So if there's an interest in, in keeping up with what has been recommended, which is the ten million, there's going to be, have to be subsidies from somewhere else besides power bill funds. I'm talking about moving forward.
Yes, ma'am.
And that would be the same for sidewalk. As we look at how much sidewalk we install, there was an influx of money as it, as it relates to the geo bond. But in the past, we've received general fund subsidies for sidewalk and continual improvements as it relates to sidewalk, and that would have to continue should we need to move forward and get ahead past this geo bond influx.
And I believe that's why the mayor sent out that email around the additional four million dollars that we're trying to use to, to put that in. And for further information, I think Jody briefed last night that there's a strong possibility that there's no doubt that we will receive that power bill funding.
It's looking good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Harrow and then Benevente.
Thank you, uh, thank you again, Mayor and, and Council. I'm in agreement with my colleague on the, um, on the signs, the sign budget and what's left there and what's being used, so I, I can pull that request back from the parking I, I just sent you all an email thread that I've been having with the Department of Transportation on, as far as item four goes, well, well, the Department of Transportation and the city. And what my concern that I just heard this morning is, we may need, and I know it's probably out of sequence some as far as the topic, but we may need to have a conversation about the street markings only really being looked at when we're resurfacing. And I think we're resurfacing, what, eighteen, every eighteen years now? Now that we changed from forty to eighteen, isn't it? So that's something that I think we need to at least have a conversation whenever we maybe come out of budget. Because if the only time it's done when it's resurfaced, come on, guys, I mean, we are, we already know what that looks like. And, and I still have to go back to some of my conversations with my, uh, some of my older citizens, they really need those lines. And wherever we can put those improvements for them, I think we really need to kind of, you know, put that on a high bar than just waiting for eighteen years.
Right, and just to, just to be clear, that's, that's each street, so we've got a lot of streets. So every year, you'll need to be doing something to stay up, step on it, but okay. All right, Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I walked in just a little bit delayed, Chuvila Court was very busy this morning. I heard conversation about street markings, but specifically bike lanes. Could I hear that portion again, please? You were talking about bike lanes, because I know that there was a bigger report that I was hoping for to future work session, is that related at all?
Not totally, but that's finishing out the community and pedestrian and bike lanes, so we're coming to you for to talk about coordinates and clarifying what bike lanes are.
Okay, and the, you were saying that you were resurfacing, but you were also making sure to put things back down?
So we need to, according to the plan.
I see. Yeah, thank you, I missed that last part.
Yep, so McGilvery Street, we just put, we just resurfaced McGilvery Street, and we just put bike lanes on McGilvery Street. What I was trying to say was is we wouldn't want to put bicycle lanes down on McGilvery Street and then come back five years from now and then pave McGilvery Street and then have to put the bicycle lanes back down. So when we're putting these bike lanes down, we're trying to coordinate it when the street gets resurfaced so that we're not doing double the work when it comes to the striping.
I love what you're saying, sir. You're saying that you are putting bike lanes back down.
Yes, sir. So I think that the, the clarifying piece that we owe you and council back is, there was not clear guidance from memory about bike lane enforcement versus pedestrian or multi-use lane enforcement. And I think that what we're bringing back at the work session is clarity around that and what's enforceable. But a companion to that is, if your interest is for us to put more money in for striping and creation of more bike line, bike, bike lanes, thank you, I got lines caught up, or multi-use, or multipurpose, then we can definitely take that as well, I think, as those come up.
Yeah, and let me just clarify, on McGilvery Street, there was no multi-use line or bicycle lane previously. That, that was a new bicycle lane that was identified in the bike plan. So it wasn't like we took something up and put it back down. That is a new, that was not there in the past. So let me just clarify on that, McGilvery Street.
Thank you, sir.
All right, um, all right, so we're moving on, just a question on the bike lane, and then, and you can continue, because we're only at question five or six, but, how do you determine the areas where you do the, the bike lanes? Is it, is it by use? I know we put them in some very peculiar places, and, and one of the things we got hit with was a few years back with the cyclist community, like other cities, not being able to, to move around consistently. How do you determine whether you go McGilvery or Langdon Street, like?
So the current bike lanes are being placed where the bicycle plan that was previously completed, as being proposing them, that was done in conjunction with NC DOT, and the next bicycle plan is going to be also done in conjunction with NC DOT whenever we go forward with a grant application that we're going to bring forward to council for approval whenever that next cycle opens up.
How old is that plan?
Uh, that plan is at least
Twenty, twenty twenty. It's twenty twenty.
All right, all right. I'll see the other questions, y'all can proceed. We'll catch it in groups of five.
Okay. I was going to recommend that we transition to page five with question fifteen, since there's so many questions regarding the streets, and since Byron's already up here. The question was, what is the number of miles for sidewalks and streets laid before bond issuance and afterward? And what is the funding stream before and after? And somebody also requested that we separate the ARPA components from it. No ARPA components were spent for streets. So Byron, do you want to come address the rest?
And when you say that now, what we did with the ARPA, if it had, if the use would allow it, is we had used it to replace some CIP projects that were already programmed in, and we were able to, to take that money. So when I say it, I don't mean taking ARPA dollars and put it directly there where any projects accelerated or replaced that were on the CIP in street infrastructure.
Uh, I don't, I don't believe so, because the, the street resurfacing is mostly Powell bill. It was not as though we got ARPA funds, they, or
Streets or sidewalks now?
Yeah, no, we didn't, we didn't receive any ARPA funds. I don't think those ARPA funds supplanted anything that we were doing
Okay.
With streets or sidewalks.
Do you want to discuss the rest of the answer?
Sorry. What was the specific question to the, are we on streets or sidewalks? I'm sorry.
This question.
Okay. Okay, yeah, so it's, it's broke down in the table, kind of what we've done before the bond issuance and afterwards. If you'll take the, the top, the top table, that's the, the sidewalk, and you'll see that a majority of the funding that we've received from FY eighteen up into this current fiscal year, we received from a pedestrian grant, about forty-four percent. You'll see about a third of the funds, a little over a third of the funds have been city general funds, and, and these are completed construction projects. So let's just take example FY eighteen, I've got one hundred and eleven, eight twenty-one. Council may have appropriated more, but since we completed the projects, if they were completed under budget, then the project was closed out and those funds got freed up, kind of how the big, where y'all cleaned up a bunch of projects late last year. So it's not, why it's not round numbers. But you'll see thirty-six percent was city general funds. We do try to leverage DOT and other pedestrian grants as we can. You'll see thus far, we've only done, completed sixty-one thousand dollars worth of geo bonds, but if you come down to the little subset, all of the, all of the geo bond funded projects that we discussed with council and got approval have started with the exception of two. And that's caused, and that's just due to staff capacity, those will start this coming fiscal year. So you'll see currently under construction, you'll see there are some city general funds and some NC DOT funds that are under construction. That is the Rose Hill Road sidewalk. Outside of the Rose Hill Road sidewalk, everything is, that is under construction, is being funded with the general obligation bond, and will be, over the next couple of years, you'll see, as we go through twenty-six.
All six point three is Rose Hill Road, plus the four million that he took?
Six point three?
Is that what you, what did you say about Rose Hill Road?
Oh, the, if you see on, under construction, the kind of second subjects, a hundred and seventy-seven worth of general funds, and then one point one five six in DOT funds, that's Rose Hill Road.
Got you.
That's Rose Hill Road sidewalks.
Okay.
No, those four, no, that's six point three. No, that five point one that are in the lap funded projects, that's some of the lap funding we got from FAMPO recently.
All right. Did have a, have a light since you throwing numbers, that, that kind of hard to remember. But Councilmember Thompson, because I had skipped some pages, my group of five didn't work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My one question when it came to paving, we talked about the Powell bill, you said during the tier, we need to spend at least ten million dollars a year?
To keep up.
How come we only spent ten million dollars one time in the past six years?
So from the pavement condition survey that we had, to, to keep a network PCI, I think it was seventy-two is what our P, overall PCI rating was, we, we estimated you need to spend, spend about ten million dollars to maintain, because if not, your, your streets are degradating as you go.
Right.
So even, even the money that we've put in with Powell bill and the geo bond, the overall network, I mean, your, your street's fine, but your overall network is, is still steadily
I'm tracking you, Byron. My, my, I guess my question is, outside of twenty twenty-four, our street paving has been deteriorating because we have not been spending ten million dollars. That would keep us at that seventy-two PCI, correct?
I would say that's correct.
So that lets us know as a council, we need ten million dollars, so we're not going downward, that we need to be on the upward swing. Am I phrasing that correctly?
Well, I would jump in on this as well, and I think you are, and I think that there's also a missing component that we may not have shared with the newer council members. The forty years that we talked about, and I mentioned last year briefly at the meeting, was using a different rating system. And so we went back and we did a pavement condition study, and I think we did the ground penetrating radar, we did a whole lot of stuff. We went curb to curb to see what street signs we had, where we had a drop inlet, we, I think we did, and we can add, we can buy layers of that data as it comes up. We came back to council at the time and we said, and we actually had a pavement preservation manager, and we came back to council and said, we have a poo poo platter or plethora, or what was the word, Mary, I think we had used the other day, cornucopia of different techniques that we can use. One of them was crack sealing. And remember last night Byron said, we don't use that anymore?
Right.
Well, but we did. That was one of the pavement preservation techniques. We had that, then you had, uh,
Micro-surfacing.
Micro-surfacing, you had, and so what you wanted to do was you extended the life of your roads by putting that black tar, which is, Mr. Harrow and I said, don't do anything, we'll make the roads ugly, and, you know, but it does extend the life. Council rightly came back and said, our residents don't like that.
Right.
We don't like it. So when y'all took that off the table, that meant that our limit, our options for preserving the roads became fewer and more expensive.
Which made our rating go down?
The money stayed, could stay the same, but again, you, to do the crack sealing is less expensive than doing the micro sealing or the full repaving. But to answer your question, no, we have not put ten million dollars there. One of the things that I think I would go back, and, and I hate I was late, and apologies for that, I was on a call with family members and couldn't break off, is, because I wanted to come back again at the beginning of the session and share with you a couple of, of, of things that came into how we prepared the budget. It is revenue neutral time where we've got to announce it. This rate is thirteen cents lower, Kimberly, than the current rate, the running proposed budget. It is six cents above revenue neutral. Councilmember Mahdros talked about the fact that for us to get revenue neutral, we would have to take a fourteen million dollars out of the current budget that we presented. Just looking over our shoulder at what Jerome and Sarah and others have added to the list already, in addition to the other items that y'all came up before, that easily is fourteen to twenty million dollars worth of new stuff. Combined with that, we also had this, the, the dramatic decline in our sales tax revenue because the county was changing the formula. We had to do historic raises to fire and police last year just to maintain and hold on. This is the lowest, can y'all repeat after me, the lowest?
The lowest.
Tax rate?
Tax rate.
That the city of Fayetteville
City of Fayetteville.
Has had in thirty years.
Thirty years.
Thirty years. Did y'all hear that at the back of the room? Hope Mills said it's the lowest one we've had in a decade. Did we beat Hope Mills? They're thirteen cents above, different organizations. I get it, I get it, I get it. But when we were here and we underspent the budget with this council, we told you, we're going to underspend the budget, nineteen million dollars. That is called shorting the market. I'm betting against myself. And so every time that you ask me to send a code enforcement officer, and I can't, I've already told you I can't, because I'm underspending the budget by nineteen million I've already told you I can't because I'm underspending the budget by nineteen million dollars. Every time I have a resident said, I can't get someone on the call center because there's no one to answer the call, I'm, I told you I'm going to do that because I'm not filling those positions. We still have thirty-seven police officer positions which are frozen rightly because we can't fill them all. And so I, I, I am, I, we've done a great job of trying to make sure that we answer as much. But no, we've not spent ten million dollars.
Let me just say this, though. I think you're doing a great job. But I also would like to say is, I don't want us to not spend money now that's going to cost us twice as much later.
And that's the guidance that we want to hear from you. Thank you.
That's what I, that's what I'm getting to. If we don't do something and maintain what we have, it's going to deteriorate. And it's all going to deteriorate at the same time where we're going to have to raise taxes twenty cent because we're going to have to fix it all. So even though we are at the lowest rate we've had in the past thirty years, we want to be smart about the money that we use for this year.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Honduras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Byron or Brian McGill or Director Thomas Inbat, the street repaving score, that report, what, when did we receive that? How old is that, give or take?
Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
So relatively new, because my next question was going to be, has that been the ten million dollar figure that we need to keep up so our roads don't degrade? Has it been adjusted for inflation?
Has it? Is it still ten, is it twelve, is it eleven?
I'd argue it's probably more.
No, we've not, we've not adjusted it for inflation. And typically, larger municipalities will redo that pavement condition survey every five?
Five years.
Three to five years.
Yeah, well, the fact that it's twenty-one, you know, it's not necessarily outdated yet. However, we'd all agree, construction projects, including paving, is more in twenty twenty-five than it was in twenty twenty-one.
Asphalt's more expensive.
My point is, it's going to be something more like twelve or more million probably. So to my council member's point, we, if we fund it less than ten and we haven't even adjusted for inflation, we're probably funding it fifty percent. And then I'll just take exception to Dr. Hewitt said that underfunding is betting against ourselves. Actually, we're betting, betting on ourselves that we can get more done with less. So everybody around this table and everybody in this room needs to get to work. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Honduras. Just two, two points, and then we do have to move it because I know we've got some important stuff. It is good to say we've got a good rate, right? But the tax bill and the check that the taxpayer got a write is not less than it's been in thirty years, right? That's what people care about, is how much do I owe on my bill? My house tax used to be this and now it's that. They will not be able to say, this is the lowest tax bill I got in thirty years. So thanks to the county finally catching up with what they should have been doing every four years by reevaluating it so it didn't put such pressure on our rate, we are where we are. But also, as we, as we try to find where money is, there are certain one-time things we can do. We don't have to run a seventeen, eighteen percent fund balance. We can take some of this to put in some of those cracks and nooks. We did ask about closeout funds, which I mean, which we've all talked about that extensively. So I hope there's some more specific information, any questions about projects that have been closed out, that we found two or three million last year. And it was really like six, but we kind of let it go at two or three. And then vacant positions, not the ones that are frozen from police, but some of these other staff positions throughout the organization that we've budgeted for two or three years that we've, you know, just need to analyze and see if it's still necessary. So there are other tactics to get it. I'm with you, we need to get enough in to operate it well, investing in this. I just, I just don't want to present to people like we did the infrastructure to say, we're going to improve your streets if you pay this extra, you vote for this extra tax and then we fall behind because we're right back where we started. And then it seems like they're not getting what we promised. So that's just a couple of thoughts I had, but I don't want to impede this.
If I can jump back on that, only thing I would say is, I want to be able to answer that question with you because, but did Byron, did we answer, do we answer that about whether or not we were behind on the revenue, I mean, on infrastructure bonds, on the paving? I mean, have we answered that question for y'all that we have not slowed down, that we actually use the money to accelerate the projects?
Well, except for this year, you're coming. I mean, they recommended you pull back.
Well, I mean, but the twenty-five million dollars that we asked for them, the component, that is sidewalks and streets, we have not, I want to put a fine point on it. We have not, it has been used to accelerate the progress of those projects. Because that is, that is huge.
Yeah.
If we are, if we've made a promise to the public that we're going to use the money and we've not done it, then I would be right with you as said. But I want to make sure that we all are at the moment that we said that question's been asked and answered.
Right, and then the continuation of it, because they've got it broken down. So if it's twenty-five and we've spent three point three currently under construction and sixty-one thousand previous, then that means that we're spending it.
Have we spent all of, is all of the twenty-five million dollars committed? I mean, we have a planned use for all twenty-five million.
Correct.
So it is.
Over what period of time?
Over what period of time?
I would say the next two years will be done with the twenty-five million.
Okay. So is that repaying us for stuff that was already programmed in? Is this additional acceleration? So we wouldn't, we would have not have taken what we were doing, including funding at the previous levels that you have here, and taken twenty-five on top of that and been through that in two years? That's the kind of acceleration I'm talking about, not replacing.
Yeah. So if you look on the, this table here, where you've got the five point one nine two of NC DOT LAP fund projects.
What is that?
When we came, it's money we got from FAMPO to do a lot of, about eleven sidewalk projects. When we first came to council with the breakdown of the public infrastructure bond, it was fifteen million resurfacing, about eight million sidewalks, and then there was some for bike lanes. Part of that eight million dollars that we were, of geo bond funds that we are, we're going to use for sidewalks, we got a little over five million dollars from FAMPO. So that has actually freed up some of that geo bond that we are using toward bridge maintenance, towards municipal agreements with DOT to do other sidewalk that's not identified in the PED plan, to do. The Safe Streets For All grant was another one, to do intersection improvements. Third fair street lighting, we're able to do as well. So with the geo bond, plus we got the FAMPO funding, that has stretched us and where we've been able to start doing thoroughfare street lights quicker, we were able to get to intersection improvements before we would have.
But not sidewalks?
Not sidewalks. We, this, between the pedestrian safety grant, the geo bond and the LAP funding, we'll have completed everything in the twenty eighteen plan, I think in.
So that's, that's the problem. So the North Star we're using is the plan. So you're basing it on, did we finish the twenty eighteen plan?
Correct.
In twenty twenty-five? So it's not necessarily the need, this is just the latest plan funding?
Correct. So they're coming in June to the work session with the twenty-five pedestrian plan, which that'll be the council, how to program it, where that funding comes from.
So that's, okay, talk to the, talk to the resurfacing. Because if he's, you're saying the recommendation is ten million a year, but you're saying there's fifteen million been already spent. So then you've exceeded the ten million a year, but I don't.
No, we, that fifteen million in resurfacing, we did a little over seven million dollars of geo bond funding in twenty-three, over three point six million in twenty-five, and we're proposing almost four. We've got a contract advertised right now for almost four.
In addition to the Powell bill?
In addition to the Powell bill.
So then you're actually over the ten, because that's not reflected?
No, we're not over the ten because your Powell bill funding in twenty-three was three point six, Powell bill funding twenty-four is four point six, and twenty-five is three point nine.
Okay, all right, got you. So still underfunded?
Correct.
Yeah.
Under the ten million to maintain?
Under to maintain what your current network is, yeah.
Yes.
So if you'll turn to the, on the last page, question sixteen.
So we're going to skip around, we're not going to hit them.
I'm going to cover one last question, and then the rest of them are kind of self-explanatory, and we'll let y'all come back to them if you have questions. Question sixteen, can we get a graph showing the residential increases in property value by municipality? So the average county increase was eighty-six point two percent. You will see Fayetteville was right in the middle, around eighty-eight point four percent, with Spring Lake having, thank you, I'm sorry, with Spring Lake having the highest increase in value in east over the least. Could everybody hear me? Do I need to repeat anything? Okay. So if, when y'all look over it and y'all have questions, if y'all have questions about any of the rest of it, you'll just get back with me later and we'll address them.
Councilman Vina Vinte.
I want my, City Manager Hewitt, when revow was first sort of announced, March period, the county commissioners put out some information about it, and they talked about the percent change by municipality. And they stated that the overall change was sixty-one point one percent for Fayetteville. Now, I can imagine between March and when this was produced, you know, letters have gone out, people have, you know, maybe contested or gotten inspections done and, you know, we may be kind of adjusting that number. Is that the case, that it's not in fact sixty-one point one percent, but is in fact eighty-eight point four?
Yes, Kimberly too.
We can go back and verify that. We received, we got that from some information we received from them, or that we'll go back and look and readdress and make sure that's the most recent.
But also, Kimberly, I think the chart says residential. And what the county put out was residential, commercial, industrial and everything else.
So there was, that was, so their number was sort of a, an average of those three categories?
It was probably more global against all the values that had changed, but I think.
And that would have brought it down, yes.
I think your chart specifically reads residential.
Residential, you're correct.
But we can verify.
Well, and I guess maybe this is a broader question for you, ma'am, is that we generate our revenue from not just residential property, correct?
Correct.
So I guess I want us to be a little bit cautious about this question and this answer because I think that it skews the consideration a little bit that we're not talking about an eighty-eight point four percent increase per se. There's, I think you said, commercial, and then what else was the third category?
Utilities.
I get that, but I'm just saying that like, it's not this bad, right? I mean, when we talk about going revenue neutral and we're talking about adjusting our tax rate, I don't think we should necessarily be looking at the worst number per se. We should be looking at this a little more globally because it's not true that we only receive revenue from residential only. Right, but I think that matters, right?
Industrial.
There you go, that's the third category. Thank you, sir. Because I know we're trying to do right by people's tax bills at the end of the year. But I guess I just wanted to add just a little bit more context that I've seen people say, you know, we've gone up eighty-eight percent, but that's not the only number that we're supposed to be thinking about. So, you know, is it eighty-eight, is it sixty? I guess that need us to be specific.
Well, it's, yes, you're correct. And I think Mr. Utley came and talked to you, and some of our realtor friends here know that that number is comprised based on the value and sales that are in the area. In my neighborhood, for instance, I think you've heard people come back and say their price, their home values went up over a hundred thousand dollars. And when I looked at, like, as everyone else has around the table, looked at what your tax bill would go up based on the new values as well, it could be upwards of a couple hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, I think, of an increase on the tax bill. And depending on whatever rate is set, three hundred dollars a year times eight years between the next evaluation is twenty-four hundred dollars. And if a person has gained over a hundred thousand dollars in value in their home, that is, they, you, you have people whose net worth has now doubled or tripled just based on the value of their properties. And the sad fact, and I think the mayor hits on this all the time, is that how we fund the operations to support this city come from asking the taxpayers and property owners to do the, pay the property taxes. It's a, it's a bad situation, but that's.
And this is my last question, Mr. Mayor. I think I made the mistake of sending this question only to ACM Yates and not to Ms. Leonard and to the city manager, because it does have to do with this question. I sent the email on the fourteenth saying if we can get, and I'm using that same sixty-one percent slide. I want some kind of like bell curve chart. Because when I think about that sixty percent, even if we look at this eighty-eight percent just for residential, we know that there are people on the lower end of that bell curve and then there are people on the upper end. And again, I think as we're having these conversations about what are we, where we land on the tax rate, it's really easy for us to kind of look at the extremes. On either end, when we're talking, when we really should be perhaps looking at, you know, who we can impact, most people that we can possibly impact. You know, I know that there's folks who seen their property values go well over that sixty or eighty. And I've seen, I know of people that have only gone up a nominal marginal five percent or less. So is there a way for us to, as you were saying, you were going to check some numbers anyways, based on my previous question, if you could also see if some kind of distribution could be mapped about what the actual, you know, number of folks are seeing an eighty percent increase, a hundred percent increase, a two hundred percent increase or much less?
I see what you're saying. You want another percentage of people in each category. Since we don't have the tax office within our component, it might be a little bit harder, but we can see what we can get from them.
Well, we'll also take a look and see if we can have the county do it, overlay the values by census tract. And then you can tell by census tract which ones may be, have a lower income value and stuff.
Did you say you want the tax office in our city?
If you can just take this up, that.
Did you say you want the tax office?
We'll try to run that down. We'll try to run that down.
All right, all right, you're good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Were you going to, were you finishing there?
I was, yes.
Let's look at question nineteen, just for clarity for myself. I brought this up at an earlier meeting. And whenever we did the geo bond, I think the geo bond was, what was it, ninety-seven million? And within that ninety-seven million, we had, we sold, and I know I did personally, I, I sold to the community certain things would be done. And I'm going back to the stormwater runoff. As I look at what's written here as far as the answer, and I do appreciate that, but one of my major concerns within the help was within that Helen Street area. And I do know that we're, we're having to finish that sidewalk before we move forward soon with some, some forms of storm drainage. Is some of that ninety-seven, is that where it's being, will be used? I know we, somebody mentioned something the last time. I understand what's going on in Tyrone. And Rosemary is, of course, is in the district, but it's further up. I think that's up like behind Hardee's, up in that area. So that had nothing to do.
Behind McDonald's.
Okay. So, so my concern is, and I want to make sure I'm understanding because these questions will be coming to me within the next couple of days as people are listening. Because the easy, just the easy everyday rain floods in that area. Did you mention that after you do the areas where the sidewalk can be completed, that there was going to be some, some of that funding used for stormwater runoff in there?
Yeah, so if you go back to the sidewalk chart here, we've got under construction. There's four projects currently under construction. One of those projects is the Helen Street sidewalk project that'll be starting.
Which page are we on? Oh, you mean back to that chart?
But Byron addressed that stormwater was not necessarily included in it because it's got its own revenue source. I think that's his.
So, yes, correct. So to install the sidewalk, we have to fix some of the stormwater.
Correct.
And that's what, that's what we'll do. So it's one project, so there'll be some stormwater pipe installed as part of that project to facilitate the installation of the sidewalk.
So that's to include like a storm drain?
Yeah, I believe there's.
When you're talking about the improvement.
Yeah, there's, there should be.
I don't, you're not meaning just putting in a swell or another creep in?
I have to go back and, and look, there may be some curbing gutter with boxes put in to storm drains like you're talking about. I have to go back and look at the plans. If there was an existing swell, we may have the sidewalk behind the swell where there's improvements to the swell to give more capacity to the water. But they're kind of, you know, some of the section of sidewalk on Helen Street that was installed already, they put some curbing gutter.
Yes, sir.
So it'll, it'll look similar to that all the way down to, I think it goes all the way to Johnson Street.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And so that is some of that. And so that is some of that, that GL bond.
Correct.
Ninety-seven mil.
Correct, it is, it's for the, it's the Helen Street Sidewalk Project, but to install the sidewalk, we do have to fix some storm drain.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, Council, I know we, uh, we've got to get into public safety, um, real important stuff. So if we can, we can look over this. I think we're still going to need a cleanup meeting or two, uh, for some of this, but it was good to get these questions. But if, out of this, I know y'all are slammed, and I really do. But if out of this, any questions that we submit, is it possible we can get them back before the next meeting so we can have time to have our stuff together? Just so we're not coming off the cuff and you don't have answers off the cuff. But, but thank you, I know you swamped, but go ahead into public safety if you can. Because Council, I may have to tip out at twelve, a little after twelve, so an hour, I may have to go.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, switching lens from the Chronicles to focus on community safety and public safety budgets. The Office of Community Safety, this slide that's up now. And the City Manager's Office has spent the past several months reviewing and analyzing and beginning to consolidate the programs and, um, that are across the city focused or would naturally fall on those pillars to build the OCS framework. And while some of those initiatives will eventually be housed within the organization, there'll be a bunch that remain collaborative in nature with those departments. The FY twenty-six OCS budget is structured around five core areas. Uh, mental health response, community-based violence intervention, homelessness risk reduction, youth opportunities, and administrative programming. And over the next fiscal year, we're going to continue to build capacity, strengthen those partnerships, and implement pilot initiatives that reflect Council's strategic direction for the OCS. I'd like to introduce Nichelle Gaines. She's the OCS Program Manager, and she will walk Council through, uh, each of the pillars of what's on the horizon for FY twenty-six. Nichelle.
Hey, how are you? Good morning, Mayor and Council. As stated, I'm Nichelle Gaines, the Program Manager for the Office of Community Safety. So I will provide an overview of what the Office of Community Safety will be working on in fiscal year twenty-six. Um, so starting with the mental health response, we are preparing to initiate a co-response study in partnership with the police and other departments. The plan to begin in the second or third quarter of fiscal year twenty-six. This study will evaluate the best-fit models in field-based mental health responses and help guide our future implementation. Next, within our community-based violence intervention, our office is working with the National Center of Community Intervention and Justice Reform, also known as NIC Junior. This is to develop a long-term CVI strategy and to shape the foundation of our violence intervention pillar. We are also continuing to collaborate with our Prue Project and other community partners to explore targeted, community-driven solutions. Next is in our homeless risk reduction. We are working to relaunch and update the IRP, which is the Impact Reduction Program Framework, while we rebrand the PD CARES team into a formal street engagement within the OCS. This transition will strengthen our coordination across departments and help connect unsheltered individuals, uh, to services more effectively. The next thing is our youth opportunities. Our office is currently leading the coordination of a ninety-day summer youth pilot program developed with ECD and Parks and Recreation. This is in conjunction with the Youth Protection Safety Ordinance Task Force. Um, events will provide the safe, structured, late-evening options for youth during curfew, during the curfew window, as part of the broader implementation strategies to support the youth protection ordinance. And last is dealing with our administrative programming. Our administrative, um, our administrative work this year is including scaling staff capacity, improving cross-department coordination, and building data systems to support tracking and evaluation across all four program pillars. We are also continuing our collaboration with ECD to partner on the Community Safety Micro Grant Program. Any questions?
Uh, Councilman Benavente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When it comes to that co-response study, how did you guys arrive at, um, starting response with co-response? I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, when we first introduced this concept, um, we were looking at Durham's Hart Model. And there was a co-response component, certainly, but there's also the alternate response component. Um, why is it that we've only gone with one of those branches?
So the term "co" and "alternate," uh, we just didn't put "alternate" on there, sir. So the study is going to really help paint the picture by evaluating, get a more data-informed decision to get that.
Thank you, sir. That, 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 that's great, that answers my question. Um, and then, when it comes to a request that we made previously, it might be the CVI strategy development, maybe? Or maybe, yeah, it's, it, tell me, tell me more about that, just so I don't make an assumption. The NICJR.
Yes, the NIC Junior. Uh, so Nichelle, uh, the incoming director, the other staff, will spend FY twenty-six in its entirety, that year long, developing a CVI strategy for the community to look at our current array and how to scale it and get other community-based violence intervention groups across the city.
Okay.
As well as building a strategic plan focused on community-based violence prevention.
So then, I know that Mr. Yates isn't here, but maybe you're familiar. We had tasked, um, this City Manager's Office previously with doing a deeper dive into the three shot-spotted identified areas, uh, looking at needs and, um, you know, what makes them so ripe for gun violence. That has already been given to somebody to work on, UNC Charlotte, perhaps?
Uh, it's with the Wilson Center, sir. Uh, and so the Wilson Center is actually conducting the, uh, they have the data, they've connected to PD and the company, uh, Sound Thinking, to actually conduct their study on shot spotters, um, and, and the pieces surrounding it.
No, so this is separate from the microphones, okay? So this is just those three areas that were identified. Um, there are needs there that, we just identify them sort of despite the fact that they've got the microphones there. Um, we're talking about, um, do you need your mic turned off, sir?
Do I?
Do we need your mic turned off?
No, it needs to be on, intervene, so go ahead.
Well, I, I'm asking questions, sir, if you can keep the laughing.
Mario, make your point.
I'm just asking, please, sir.
Well, make your point.
Let's, let's be cordial here.
This is my area.
But I'm just asking, please.
Make your point.
Thank you, sir. Um, if you could, please. We had a study requesting what makes this area so ripe for gun violence? That's separated, in, in, apart from the microphones. Where is that study?
I believe you're referring to the Cost of Gun Violence Study with UNC Charlotte.
Yes. Where is that?
Sir, that study's underway, and we anticipate getting that feedback from them in the second half of FY twenty-six. So in the, the fall, I'm sorry, late winter of FY twenty-six. They're currently in that study now.
Okay, now, can that effort be included in some of this? And by that, I mean just, obviously that has to do with this, right?
Yes, sir, we just, it's just not listed on there as a, a major component as the study's been underway for a while. Some of this funding previously carried over, and then what you see here is in the FY twenty-six budget.
Makes sense. I mean, if, City Manager Hewitt, is there any reason that would be an issue with kind of including maybe? And maybe this is a bigger question than, whatever comes of that study, right? I mean, there's going to be some action that needs to be taken from it. Is there an opportunity for us to include that in this request? Because, I mean, what's the point of having a study if we don't take action? So that's kind of why I'm asking for it to be included in this budget. Um, we can anticipate, I know we don't know what they're going to recommend yet, obviously, it's not complete. Um, but what's the appropriateness of that?
Yeah, so that item was funded in FY twenty-five, it is underway. Um, and, uh, they are going to complete that study in, in the midpoint or the, the quarter three roughly of FY twenty-six. The, the findings of that study, the outcome of that study will be entirely housed and controlled by OCS to implement the subsidiary components.
Okay, fair enough. Um, CARES engagement team, is that going to, is that currently housed in FPD?
Yes, sir. And so there, there are, uh, it's discussion now, uh, at the City Manager's Office and the Police Department on what that rebrand looks like without diminishing the capacity of the current team, but to create a version, uh, separate from uniform, but in OCS at a street engagement level. Still in its very infancy, sir.
And then, um, youth opportunities, I kind of want to get a better flowchart or understanding of how we arrived at that request. So could you tell me a little bit more about what that, I know you kind of stated it, Ms. Gaines, exactly what would be done? Could you restate that? And I don't know, maybe it's a Doug question or a Chief Joyce question about why we arrived at that request?
So currently, right now, we are working on a ninety-day pilot program in conjunction with the Youth Safety Curfew Ordinance. Um, so this will run along with that in providing, um, activities for youth to do in the evening times closer to, um, that curfew time for the youth protection ordinance.
So it's just for programming? Or is this, and again, I'm, Mr. Hewitt, please stop me if I, if I'm, um, saying the quiet part out loud. But someone's got to babysit those kids that we're trying to round up. Is this part of that?
It is probably a little early for us to, to hit some of that. We have, are fleshing out that program of what that looks like, and that's okay, but we're fleshing it out. And, um, we can talk about that some, um, uh, but it really depends on the direction and conversation we hear from Council. But that is a consider, deep consideration to what we are proposing as well, because that is what you'll hear from the Police Department as well.
Yeah.
What happens, if it happens?
I don't think we know.
And, sir, if I may, there, there's two separate pieces here. I think what you're speaking to about is the engagement or the custody and elements that PD may encounter. This is a separate initiative based off of, uh, motions created by Council to May fifth meeting. And so this is part of the overall strategy that Nichelle is speaking about, that ninety-day pilot program. In terms of police and the custody control component of youth and after hours, that is still in the task force and being worked with DSS, DJJ, and the Police Department right now.
Now, so separating the two then, we're talking about, is this going to have, what, what department is going to be kind of co-driving this, this ship? I know you said a lot of these are kind of like housed and, and under different, two separate or, or multiple departments. Who's, is this Parks and Rec?
On the youth one?
The youth opportunities, community safety, focused events.
So, uh, in the working group for the youth opportunities in this, the accompaniment of that strategy, Nichelle and her team at OCS are the lead, but they are working hand-in-hand with economic and community development and Parks and Rec and the Police Department and a myriad of faith-based and nonprofit organizations across the city.
When you talk about the Parks and Rec component in particular, we had discussed, um, extension of hours this summer, um, you know, more, um, or perhaps even, um, you know, ways to help parents get their kids there transportation-wise. And then even, you know, the cost of being able to participate in some of this programming. Is that all a part of that discussion? Or is that, again, a separate thing?
Yes, sir. So, uh, each working group is tasked with a definitive scope, schedule, and cost for us to aggregate and bring back to Council at the June ninth meeting.
So that's not this one fifty?
Uh, a portion of that may be for that pilot program as with, they're developing the relationships in that, that platform. Again, working with ECD, who has very strong relationships to a lot of youth programming, um, and the Parks and Rec Department, who has an abundance of that going on. Um, and so we program that value based off what we anticipated or projected at the cost of sponsoring some of those events and, and also enabling other nonprofits.
In just the ninety days?
No, sir, no. That is the, that's the FY twenty-six budget, so we don't, I do not anticipate that ninety-day program costing a hundred and fifty grand. We're, we're still looking at it and can't get you a defined answer, sir.
Okay, so then maybe I'm still misunderstanding. What is the ninety-day program then? Is that separate from that one fifty? Or is it included in that one fifty?
Sir, I, I, we're still deep in the budget process of, of assimilating that, but that is one of our options to fund it.
Yeah, okay, I see. I, I guess one fifty seems very, very, very low for the level of harm, I think, a criminalization curfew is going to create. And if we're going to counteract that harm by providing, you know, potentially, like Councilmember McNair said, direct payments to families to be able to take advantage of opportunities, um, the kind of counseling, the kind of, you know, investments that we need to make, one fifty seems like a very, very nominal figure for the incredible amount of harm we're set to create with this curfew.
And, and that may be the variable, sir, but this budget item is focused on youth programming and sponsored events by the OCS, not the holistic strategy, which will be a much different number.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. All right, uh, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And let me just obviously state, that's just one individual's opinion. But I want to get back to your co-response study. And my question is, how do you move forward with your staffing and your program if you don't have this study back until mid or late twenty-twenty-six?
On the co-response, on the mental health component, sir?
Yes.
Sir, that's when that study will be initiated, not back. There's not an active study right now underway for that.
So it won't even be initiated until late twenty-twenty-six?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Hare.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Uh, if we can, if we're finished with, if we're finished with that particular item, I wanted to ask a question about the, um, the following bullet, bullet, uh, community safety, the micro grant, if we're finished with that item.
Uh, I, I think we are, before he goes to that question, I just had something along that line. Um, so basically, the expansion of safe spaces is, is how I would classify that. That, that you have alternatives for these kids versus being in the street and seeing our numbers go up and their lives be taken and, and encountering the justice system. So this is an expansion of safe spaces. So you'll come back with some more detailed about the comprehensive expansion ideas?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. All right, so if, if no further questions on that, Councilmember Hare, you still have the floor.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. As we move down to the, to the next item, uh, administrative and, and programming, the, the one hundred and thirty thousand for the micro grant program, tell me where the changes are from the beginning? And is this a raise, an additional amount of a request? Because I can't remember those amounts. For some reason, I'm thinking like fifty or seventy-five thousand. Tell me where it has changed. I mean, tell me where we started to where we are now. Also, tell me before I even, uh, go back to my, um, my parking lot, uh, interest, was all of the funding in the present budget used? Or just where it was before I moved to speak on this parking lot item that I have for micro grants?
So I'm, I'm bringing up currently the Assistant Director of ECD, Alex Baker. Uh, he'll be able to articulate more on the cost and, and the previous scope. Uh, I'll just speak to the fact that it's in this as an item with the OCS, and that is a connective tissue between ECD, as it is a community-based, uh, event, um, and will be collaborated with, but ECD has all of the inner workings of the program, sir. Alex.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Brooke.
Um, Council has been allocating approximately one hundred and thirty thousand dollars annually for micro grant. Uh, that funds a year of micro grant, fifty thousand dollars each round for six months, and thirty thousand dollars we take to administer the program as we partner with FTC, Fairville Technical Community College, to do some capacity building for nonprofits.
Okay, so to follow up with my question, since the one thirty has been the request, and I know we do it in two phases, where are we now, uh, as we move into budget? Was all of that spent or just, what's the balance, if any?
Uh, we did spend approximately fifty thousand dollars the first round, and we have issued another fifty-some thousand dollars this round. Uh, that money will be receipted back end, uh, so I don't have that. They are outperforming their activities. Uh, and we also have, uh, that engagement with FTCC, which we just wrapped up. Um, so we have pushed that money out, and as far as any, uh, remaining, it would be min, a very minimal amount if any funds are returned.
Okay, so, eh, as I stated in the email that I sent to, uh, Council and staff, I would like for us to consider, and I know it's this whole lot we're trying to get done, to increase that so that it doesn't, uh, it doesn't run out. Maybe we can do more. I want it to go up to two hundred thousand. That is just a parking lot proposed, proposal that I sent out to others. One of the reasons also that I wanted to support for this specifically, and I know it really depends on the community and what they make a request for to reply, uh, in, in the application. But as we talk about, uh, community safety and what's going on in the communities, and what is it, the FUSIA?
FUSIA.
The FUSIA program. I think if we, I would love to see where we could push the, the FUSIA program even the more concerning the ring doorbells, especially in those main corridors, and this is just a conversation, as they go in and out of the, those communities. What a great plus that would be to help, uh, our Police Department. So I will, uh, when we get to the point, uh, be requesting if we could take that all the way up to the two-hundred K as a part of the email that I sent to everyone a few weeks ago. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to kind of piggyback off of Councilmember Hare, I would like to include, um, I know you talk about the Ring Cameras, but I think all of us, when we go to our neighborhood, watch the biggest thing that people complain about. watch, the biggest thing that people complain about is speeders. And, you know, we have these machines that, you know, people go by and it shows what they are. I think at this point, we have one machine that goes all over the city. And so like there are some neighborhoods, probably 20, 30 years ago, when they weren't as expensive, have them and they move them from place to place. I would really like to see that part of the micro grants. And even maybe if the neighborhood wants it, I know there are neighborhoods that have cameras. As you go into the neighborhood, it shoots the license plate. So if something happens in the neighborhood, they know. If you have a speeder that keeps speeding by, then the neighborhood HOA can kind of take care of it themselves. And it's good for teenagers. So I will say, I've seen it happen. And a lot of people that I go to these neighborhood watches are very interested in that. So I am in favor of taking it up that amount if we can include that in it. And if the neighborhoods want it, they can apply for it.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Protim. That also was one of my parking lot items. I was thinking it was maybe separate, the reason I didn't say it with the micro grants. But I'm 100% in support of that. Because a lot of our, I just made a request for Scotty Hills. You know, if we just, I'm surprised we only have the one. But I support that.
All right.
However, we can get it in there.
Thank you, Councilmember Hare.
You have two.
Councilmember Benavente, second round.
Mr. Hewitt, can we get clarity on the number of speed centuries that we have per district? Because it's a lot more than one.
Then I think we need to let the people that are saying that.
Can I have it to where I can press the button and automatically get mic access?
No.
But isn't that interesting?
Comes with the gavel, my friend.
But this, she doesn't have it.
But I can't cut it off.
She doesn't have it.
So just ask your question.
I did already, I'm waiting for the answer.
So we currently have 18 speed century signs. We have two of the mobile message boards that we can utilize. So right now, we have 18 of those speed century signs. And I think that's what you were referring to, Mayor Protim, in the neighborhood.
And Chief, as well, you recall the conversation you and I had along with Councilmember Davis and others. When we came back from NCLM, one of the vendors that several councilmembers went to was about the speed century signs, about the speeding signs. And we're going to be looking to increase that number as well. So that we can saturate an area as necessary. But definitely need more than 18. And I think that's definitely going to be something that we can do.
And I'd also want to have a little bit more clarity about some of the things that were just said by Mayor Protim. Because I don't want us to be advertising something that is ultimately illegal. What sort of response would you have, Chief Joyce, to this concept of giving HOAs access to people's license plates?
I don't believe we would be giving the homeowners association any access to the data. The data would allow, based upon if a homeowner says, hey, they're speeding in our neighborhood during the morning or afternoon hours. The speed century signs capture the data of the speeds and the most prevalent times that that is occurring. Then in turn, gives us the data to go and conduct enforcement during those time periods.
Thank you, Chief. I know that that's what the speed centuries currently do. I think a comment was made about gathering information about license plates. Is that what you said?
So what I said is there are cameras that HOAs have put at the entrance of their neighborhoods. So when you have people that come into your neighborhood, if there has been a robbery or they has, it is, every car is videotaped. So if there is a robbery, we can give the tape to the police and it helps them find. Just like people come to my business, that I have cameras that are out on 401. They will come and look to see if they can see when this certain truck came through Ramsey Street. I will say that there's quite a few neighborhoods in my district that do that. And it has been very helpful. And as we know, District 1 has probably one of the lowest crime rates. So these technologies are helping.
So City Manager Hewitt, can we discuss, maybe with the city attorney's office, government providing funds for surveillance that the government would not otherwise be able to implement?
All right.
I have a question, I'm waiting for an answer, sir.
All right, well, then we've got other councilmen.
We can discuss it with the city attorney. I think what I, not to parlay on that or move away from it. But if the interest is for us to come up with additional strategies that people could apply for micro grants for and come back to y'all for approval of those, we can definitely do that.
But this idea that we are going to be funding every neighborhood to have surveillance at the entry points for people to come in and out and to record that is not something that we presently do. And I think it seems like an odd workaround to then create a micro grant, you know, funds for the citizens to then.
Councilmember Benavente, we got to move on.
I got you, sir. But I mean, we can't be saying unconstitutional ideas and getting excited about them.
Councilmember Davis.
Can we make sure?
Thank you. At what point are we going to have? I think we're supposed to have the police department to come and bring us the technology and stuff that they're asking for, correct? Is it today? Yeah, okay, so I think we can wait for that discussion there. But I do want to make it known that I just had a meeting with my Orange Street and the mayor, the city attorney, city manager and Ms. Strickland can tell you they were asking for these things in their neighborhoods. Because in Orange Street, they have a lot of issues. So I concur with my colleagues on getting these things in the neighborhoods. Thank you.
All right, well, we'll keep, and there's a difference between surveillance cameras, like any business, a home could have, and license plate readers to say this is John Doe's car. So surveillance, I think, we're interchanging the two words. People can put surveillance cameras wherever they want. All right, so please proceed. I know we've got more ground to cover. Chief, your turn for this great event here.
Good morning, again, still morning. So the first slide you'll see, of course, is our operation budget for fiscal year '26. As you look through that, through the business operations, emergency communications, field operations, and specializes, include the salary and our operations budgets for all of those areas of the department. PSAP, we know, of course, is through the E911 fund as well. Also confirmed with Ms. Reed that the process for the grant application is still moving forward with that May 30 deadline that is looming. Of course, if you look at the total recommended budget, that is not the same as you see in your budget book. However, the additional $2 million is in response to our SRO and TCO operation. And those reimbursements that will come from the county. Cumberland County Schools, I apologize. I don't know, that slide is next, can I skip over that? I'm going to have to skip through those slides.
Are you on to the next slide, Chief? I just had a question. Before you proceed, I see that the Police Athletic League, we've had it a while. Think it's good. As we look to expand options, and I see we only have 48,000. Wanted to know, what are your thoughts if it's expanded, maybe by PAL partnering with some of these other organizations that do athletic or youth-based programming? And then maybe just provide a grant or partnership to expand it? Because I know you're limited on manpower. So, you know, the actual interaction that you all may have may be contained to what we've been using with PAL. Speak to that if there are other organizations, credible ones, that use our rec centers that may have, maybe not necessarily boxing leagues, but may have some other sports, or cheerleading, or dance, or some other things, just to increase the capacity.
Yeah, of course, you know, you can look at the faith-based community. They do a lot of things with upward, especially with basketball, other things as well. You know, we used to partner with the Cal Ripken Foundation as baseball was heavily a part of the Cal Ripken Foundation, getting young people into baseball that never had had an opportunity to play in youth sports. So I definitely think we can go back and look at things like Cal Ripken Foundation. Look at our faith-based community with upward. Those who would be willing to partner with the PAL board to increase that visibility, increase the opportunities for youth.
All right, so if you can, just add for consideration, expanding funding for the PAL program to maybe include partnerships. And also expanding funding for the micro grants, since 30,000 of it is going to administration. It's only really a net of 100. But if we expand that, I'm sure that the need and the partnerships can grow. So that was the only two points. Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Please, sir. Oh, I see, all right. Councilmember Hodros Thompson, Benavente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Chief. On this slide here, the list, can you go down the list and tell me which ones personnel and which ones not? Or whichever list is shorter? I know a bunch of these are personnel, but some of them are not, so.
Well, personnel included all, how it's broke down with police administration, personnel who are assigned to their chief staff unit includes like our crime, not crime prevention, our crime prevention, as well as our internal affairs unit, community affairs in those. Communication, of course, is our 911 center staff. When you get to field operations, forensic unit is, of course, self-explanatory with the personnel who are assigned there. Patrol is the majority, of course, you see the bulk. That is our patrol officers who are assigned out to each of the three districts. Our special investigations are those in our narcotics vice suppression unit, gang unit. Major crimes, of course, of all are investigative of homicide, youth services.
Are any of these that don't have personnel in them?
No, they all have personnel in them.
So even?
Specialized operation.
Like 800 MHZ on emergency communications, the middle one, that's personnel there?
Well, and that may just be for the 800 megahertz system itself with communications.
That's what I'm trying to determine. Which one of these is not personnel at all? Is what I'm asking.
The only one would be the 800 megahertz PSAP operations and Police Activities League.
Okay, thank you. And then on the chief staff, approximately how many personnel is that? How many positions? Ballpark?
Forty.
And are they sworn or not sworn?
It is a combination of both.
Then you don't have a ballpark breakdown?
No, sir, I do not. I can get that for you.
What else is in the chief staff besides the 40 positions?
We have some of our TFOs that are assigned in there as well, who work for the FBI Joint Terrorism Task Force. So we have FBI TFOs who are assigned in there as well. You have our internal affairs unit.
TFO is task force officer?
Task force officers.
For a future meeting or possibly just an email, can we get a breakdown, Mr. Manager? Or Mr. Yates, or somebody, on personnel versus non-personnel for each of these categories? Can I put that in the parking lot or wherever?
We can. I was also looking in the budget book, which provides a little bit better data than just the chart. Looking at, starting on G34, it may not specifically answer your questions. But we will, let's see, Jerome is writing that down. And we will try to break out what's different between personnel and other activities in those categories.
All right, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to piggyback off the question that you asked about PAL. Because I was fortunate enough to attend the Heal the Veil program that Mrs. Murphy had last Saturday, I believe. And I talked with the individual from PAL who had his bus out there. And I asked him what that bus can be used for and how we can use it for other nonprofits to bring some of our youth together for some of these other activities. I think the only obstacle that we'll have is insurance. Because as long as he makes contact and puts it on the schedule, I don't think that'd be a problem. And then I looked at, it's only 481, I've got the number that, 481,000 for PAL. If we can increase that number to help us with these programs, that'd be something that will alleviate some funds from being distributed somewhere else. So thank you for that, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, one of the things I would ask the chief to do, and we can put this in the parking lot as well, is to give a fuller description or two of how PAL is different in our Parks Recreation Program and which youth groups they work with. It is for the children that need that, that may benefit from that intensive support. It also includes a boxing program.
Yes, it does.
And what you know, I'm talking, you know this.
I had a long conversation with him.
But if we can also issue a report, maybe not as part of this budget session, but this would be something that we can ask the new chief and staff to come back and talk about, all of the programs that support what you're talking about.
Can I just add one more thing, Mr. Mayor? I think it's imperative that when we see things like this, we try to understand how it can be collaborative with other nonprofits and other organizations that can help us get to where we want to be. And that is a safe city for our youth. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate that. And, you know, I guess following, potentially at the moment when we talk about it, following the same model like we do with the micro grants. You know, companies or nonprofits or religious organizations with track records that may have some programs that concentrate on whatever that specialized population is. But thank you. Councilmember McNair?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to share that I was in a meeting this morning with United Way, with Mr. Scott Embry, which is the executive director and CEO of United Way. He shared with me that, I think on tomorrow, he will be announcing a literacy council program. And also, he is seeking to partner with the city, which, you know, he talked to many of you guys before. What I discovered is that his work is very promising with connecting with different organizations in our city and also bringing the city to a place of improvement when it comes to different programs. And I've been established to support, I do believe, the Office of Community Safety. Probably not from the top, but from the back end, from the beginning. We have to start somewhere. And then also, he was asking if we would have a 5 to 10K that would go a long way with the city employees, if they would take advantage of or donate, I think he said $1, from each employee over a period of time that would help support United Way. Because they are actually really a, I felt like, while I was sitting in a meeting with him, that this is the answer to a lot of our problems and our situations, especially getting those individuals that want to help in our community that are not structured properly. He also had a program that actually guide individuals that really have the passion to help in our city that doesn't have the capacity and the know-how to support the way they should be supported and not get denied each time they step forward to help, you know, the city move forward. Is that something that we can put in our parking lot?
You said a lot there, give me the details so we can put the specific thing.
Oh, okay.
So it's just expanding, you don't have to go through all of that. But I mean, just the highlights of what you're saying.
The highlight is, once he announces his literacy council program on tomorrow, he wants support from the city.
Oh, this is a specific person? So I think the better way to do it, just so we don't get into passing out money at this table, is maybe we allocate programs that we have and then point these partners to community development or to the department.
So.
So maybe, you know, we can notate increased funding for literacy, you know, however you described it. And then they'll have to apply for it and do the things that you have to do to get it. Is that satisfy what you said?
But he's actually giving money. Their program is giving money to different organizations.
All right, so Jennifer, y'all captured that? Maybe to, I guess if there are resources out there that could go toward some of our initiatives, that's what you're saying, that we can make sure we connect with it? Okay. Okay, that's, that's, we always like to get money more than give it. I like that.
That's why I thought you were changing. I'm like, you misunderstood.
All right, thank you, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember here. Did you have your button? Okay.
No, sir, I think that's.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
All right, Chief.
Hold on, please, Mr. Mayor, just before you, Chief, just one question, because I was waiting for that. I asked that, and then I think one of my colleagues asked, so was there any specifics on the improved technology that we had a discussion on? I was waiting to hear that. Did I miss it?
It's, it's included a little later.
Oh, okay, later, okay, 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 okay. Thank you, thank you, Chief.
I hope this is the easiest and most boring thing you guys have today. This is our budget. Of the 39, 696, roughly just before, just under 36 million of that is salaries. This budget does include three new fire inspectors and one plans examiner. The other 3 million and some changes are fuel, power bills, utility bills, maintenance, training, things like that. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I, I did, Chief. Thank you for that. That was, that was quick, easy, so I hope, I hope the rest is boring too. But the, right now, if you go for, through the permitting process, fire was not connected to the same system that the development services were. It was, they approve it and then they're waiting on fire to, to do it. Is there, is there any more connectivity between those two?
Yeah, we're on the same, they're on the same now, right?
Okay, all right, so they've, they've bridged that.
Yeah.
That gap. And how about the, the response? So this new position you're adding will be specifically to approve and, and to, to help work through that workload? Sometimes some of those are, are held up in, you know, one department waiting on another.
Right, well, historically, the Fire Marshal's Office was understaffed and overwhelmed, and as the city grew, it didn't. So the guys are fighting tooth and nail every day just to get the maintenance inspections done and the, the new construction things and all that. So this one plans examiner, yes, that'll be his job is to help take the load off, and that'll actually put two in the office doing plans examining, and then the additional three are doing the maintenance inspections, which is building revenue to help offset their cost.
Thanks, sir. All right, Council, any other questions for Chief? All right, man, looks like you, nice and easy. Thank you. Mr. Clip.
I'm sure you'll find mine quick, easy and boring.
We hope so.
All right. You've seen this before, employer chase, choice framework, and part of that is competitive compensation. Our philosophy is to attract and retain a skilled and diverse workforce, offer competitive salaries, and also ensure equity both internally and externally and fairness and equity. One of the things that we've noticed, probably about three or four months ago, after we did what we did last year with public safety, in these last few months, we've seen some change in especially people promoting from the step plans into the pay range plans. So firefighters and, and fire lieutenants going to captain and above, and police officers going to captain and above, or sergeants and lieutenants and, and above that. So we've been looking at this lately, and the, the thing that is interesting is that the market data is competitive. So I think the ranges, the step plans, I think we're right in alignment with where we need to be there. In, in reviewing this, it appears to me that the issue really is that the non-step employees are not positioned properly in the pay grade. So this graph, I think, really illustrates really well, and this is something that Chief Ferguson did with the fire department, and, and this follows through with what's happening in the police department as well. So you'll see these gray bars are the pay ranges. And then for the, those outside of the step plans that are in pay ranges, the X's mark the midpoints that are here. You'll notice that with, for instance, firefighter and lieutenant, those that are on the step plans, they pretty much fill the complete step range. As soon as we transitioned into captain, you'll see that people are.
Councilmember Thompson.
Mr. Clip, can you explain who's on a step plan and who's not on a step plan?
Okay, sure. So for the fire department, the fire, the firefighter and lieutenants are on step plans here. In the police department, police officers are on step plans. All right.
So no off.
Telecommunicators as well.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right, so you'll, you'll notice again that the step plans, people are filling pretty much the, the whole step plan range there, but as you, soon as you go into the non-step plans, this is where we're starting to see a lot of compression at the bottom end. So what's happening is when we placed these people in the step plans last year where they needed to be, they were placed pretty high in the step plan. And then when they transition over and promote, they're going into the pay ranges and leapfrog leapfrogging those that were already there, because they were in a higher place in the step plan.
Yeah, yes, sir, Councilmember Hodros.
This is not favorable police department and favorable fire department combined, is
it? Correct, this is just the fire department.
This is just the fire department, okay, so there's another one with police?
There is not. I just put this up here to prove this point about where people are in the, in the pay, pay range.
So there was a parking lot item for police compression, so we don't have that, and we got the firefighter one that I don't recall anybody asking for? That, that's, okay.
Well, yes, and I'm getting to both, police and fire, all public safety. But this is just to prove the point of where people fall in the pay grades. So, for instance, in the police department, this is a true example. We have police officer A who's promoted to sergeant from step 10. Okay, so they're going into a pay grade, a sergeant pay grade from step 10, which is a step plan. So from step 10, the police officer A is offered a 10% salary increase or minimum of the pay grade, which is our policy, whichever is greater. So they come in at 93,000, a little over 93,000 as a sergeant. We also have a police sergeant that has been a sergeant for seven years, and they're currently making 90,000, almost 91,000. So this is the leapfrogging that we're seeing. So that's the police department, here's the fire department. There's a fire lieutenant A who's promoted to captain from step nine. From step nine, they're offered a 10% salary increase or minimum of the pay grade, whichever is greater, they come in at 81,861. There's a current fire captain that has been there for 13 years and is currently at 81,050. So that's the compression that we're seeing because of this.
All right, Councilmember here.
I was trying to, you said the word leapfrog, so this probably means what I'm thinking. So if we went back to, okay, if we go back to the compression for the police department and a sergeant that's been there for seven years, for example, at the, the 98, 999, the, the leapfrog that you were speaking of, where they're jumping up in the step plan to the 93,000, that's what you're meaning?
Correct.
Okay, and that's the same thing for the captain on the fire department?
Correct.
Right, okay, okay, I got you, I got you, all right. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Thompson.
Mr. Clip, help me understand, the step plan is for every year of service, correct?
It is now, yes.
So if you have a police officer that is in step 10, that means he has 10 years of service, correct?
Yes.
He's making $93,000. So if you have an officer that is a sergeant, who's only have seven years making 90,000, what's wrong with that picture? I don't understand. Because he has three more years than a sergeant that has seven years making less than him. Say it again? Oh, seven years in grade, not seven years, got you, got you. It didn't say that, that's why I asked. That means he's had seven years as a sergeant, where this sergeant at step 10 just made sergeant. That's the point that they're trying to make. So if you just made sergeant and making $93,000, but he's been a sergeant for seven years and only making $90,000, that's where the problem is, correct, Mr. Clip?
Yes.
So he has seniority over me, but he's, but I'm making more money than him.
Correct?
Thought I had it. Thank you, Mr. Clip. Go ahead, move on.
So possible solutions here that, that I've looked at, we need to place the non-step public safety employees in a higher position in the pay range, so that they're equal to where the step plan folks are, which are now placed higher because of what we did last year, to make them more equal. The good news is that this should be a one-time-only placement of current non-step public safety employees, so once we correct that, because of what we did last year, it should even out. But I also think we need to look at the structure of the pay plans as well, because there may be some things, I, I'm not sure how sustainable this is based on what we did last year, so I feel like we need to look at some of the structure of the pay plans as well. So, looking at costs, just looking at what we need to do here to, to get people up where they need to be, it could be upwards of 1.5 million to do this. But what I'm recommending is that we conduct the public safety compensation study that we've put in the budget, and the cost there is 75,000. And then we set aside some of the funds to fix some of these issues, based on what I've looked at so far. And then begin implementing the solutions in January 2026, once those compensation study findings come back.
All right, Mr. Clip, did have a couple of responses or questions. I, I did have one, I know I've heard about six studies today. I think we studied everything, analysis paralysis over here. So what are we going to do to fill our gap while we're going through our compensation study? So estimated timeframe of a study, you think you can get done this year, implementation next year, does he have to re-budget for next year? That's June of next year, new budget starts in July, so really, we're talking 2027, other than the last three, four months of 2026, what a gap. There is no interim recommendation that you have? So, put the previous slide up, which tells council what the number is. So can you, can you do both and? Can you fix it temporarily, if the money is identified from what source, so that it doesn't impede his, his recruitment efforts while you're doing a study? Because everything we've talked about today is slowed down by a study, and everything we've talked about is being recommended, addressed by a study. OCS, this, bicycle plans, new studies, update the study, I mean, so I'm just questioning, can you do both and?
I'll try to jump on, on that as well. Yes, we could, but it's not recommended. And this is part of the conversation I think we had yesterday at the mayor, mayor pro temp meeting. I, when we made the decision last year, and I've always told you, I'm never going to argue with you if you want to pay the staff more money, including me or the city attorney, never. So the issue came up about how do things like this work? Anyone who's worked in private sector knows that your salary data is not as public as it is in public sector. And so you've all worked with people who you knew when you worked in private sector, they came in, they were making more money than you, and you always felt they had less experience than you do. That's not ideal, but that is, also can be the real world. And when we say that one year equals one step of service, what happened was is that now people who are at the end of their steps, they promote, and when you actually look at the real numbers at the employees, who, I, I just had a grievance, was it yesterday or the day before?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, on this same issue with someone who, if I told, you know exactly who it is, y'all all know the person by name and face. That did not happen because it was something that HR in the past wanted to do, or the chief wanted to happen in the past. It is a structural issue to how we've had recruitment and done in the city. And so, yes, we can fix it. But every time when the new chief comes in and he's going to do a first sergeant's promotion process, is that we talked about, Chief? And then what's the next promotion after that? And then, then there were all of those. Every time the next chief makes a promotion list, if you don't have a structure in place that addresses this, you're going to have a new compression issue. Every compression issue, we fixed all the compression issues in fire. And when those folks got promoted, the, the compression issues came about. And so what I told the employee yesterday, and will be telling them in a letter, is council has identified it, council supports it, I support it, Jerry supports it, but we want to make sure we get it right. But if y'all want to, as I said, never going to deny paying employees, but in, in the private sector, it's not that these employees and the employers, they said, I'm appreciative of what I make. You're paying, I'm not arguing about what I make. It is a, but it is, appears to be a fairness issue that someone who has less time and grade than I do is now making the same thing or more than I did because they waited to get promoted or they got promoted in a new system. And that's what I think Jerry's trying to say, we're not talking 2027. We're saying that, put the money aside so that when the new chief comes on board, he would, or she would be able to come in and would be able to inform this study as well, and we'd be coming back to you here hopefully in December for implementation of these pay plans in January. But if council wants to do something different, we're stand ready for that as well.
Councilmember Thompson. Oh, oh, and Hodros.
Look, can I respond to that, Mr. Mayor? I appreciate that, Doug. And personally, and I'll just speak on behalf of council, I apologize to all the firefighters and police officers who this is falling onto, that we did not do our due diligence prior to give you the market and step rate pay, so we wouldn't be here today. So that is on us. I do agree with the city manager, where we have a new police chief coming in with new promotions coming in, that we fix it once, so we don't have to fix it again. Hopefully, they will bear with us, hopefully, they will stay with us until we get this fixed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Hodros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On our budget chronicles, question seven, did the police have any requests that were not funded? Where can we find the list? It says they were all funded, where can we find the list of the recommendations that were funded? And then similarly, question 10 is for fire, and one of their initiatives was funded, it looks like, and three were not. Where, where can we find those two lists? It's not in our budget book? In the CIP book? All right, can we just get the list emailed to us, so we don't have to flip through two books? Appreciate it. On question 17, and I appreciate what my colleague said, but we can pull the taste from last year, because I know what I said, which was, when we were, when we moved this initiative forward, it was to fix compression issues. So whether it's on the public side or the private side, well, I'll just speak for the private side, when we say we're going to fix something, so you fix compression, it fixes all the compression. It doesn't say, well, we fixed this compression, but we didn't fix this compression. So, well, number one, let me ask, how long is the study going to take? I'm presuming a year, right?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping that it'll only take maybe three to four months.
But it won't be implemented for fiscal year 2026, it'll be implemented for fiscal year 2027?
Well, what we're recommending is that it would, whatever the results are, that we would implement it in January.
Well, that's better than, that's better than July, but, but. My, right, my, when we approved the budget last year, I think it was June 25th or 6th, before July 1, when the new fiscal year went into effect, I knew there was compression issues on question, I think I might have said 17, it was question 12, from the sergeant to assistant police chief positions, there's 45 out of 53 filled. I knew there was compression there, so if I knew it, I know you knew it. So my point is, the recommendation for the study, while I appreciate it, should have been made last year, so we would have had it this year. So I'm for budgeting 450,000 or whatever it will take to fix specifically question 12, and then receiving if we can't fix all. question twelve, and then receiving, if we can't fix all, I'd love to fix it all, and then receiving the study to fix it in January. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so I, I want to speak to that a bit. I'm, I'm with Councilmember Hondros. When we were told to get, give the extra five or six million dollars to fix compression, it would have been good to know that we weren't fixing all of it. Okay? I mean, at, at the end of it, I understand that it's an ongoing problem, but it's not a new ongoing problem. We knew when we did it then that there were gonna be reactions, which I recall being told that if you do this, this will fix it. And then we had to also get additional revenue in for public safety. And so that provided us a source to do it, because you don't want to use one-time money to hire people. So I get that. So my question is, in the meantime, because we're already behind in recruitment, and if this causes a problem with attrition increasing, because if, if I'm working, yeah, I'm gonna have a problem if I've been there and somebody leapfrogs me, is there a way to do some one-time bonuses or something while it's being fixed? But I am with him, give us the full story on the front end so we're not continuing to redo this. That's the problem that we have, is that, you know, we, we baked this into what we need to do. You know, we, we factored it in that it was done, and now we're back doing it again, but saying we need to get a roadmap to do it, which it would have been good to have that on the front end. So is, are there other options to, to one-time bonuses or something?
It is. It is. If you, if y'all decide that you want us to fix it, we'll fix it any way you choose. One of the things that I would again say, and say this with respect, last year we came and we were adjusting the salaries. Council also said we want to adjust one year equals one year of service. I shared with y'all then that that also is going to create a problem for us in a very near future, because we're going to be, and this isn't, this isn't denying what y'all may have said or whatever else. We thought that we implemented faithfully what you asked us to do. When you asked me if I was aware of compression, I told you I was not aware, I was not aware of any other compression issues. And as those became aware, and I became aware of those, I went to Director Clip and, and the departments, and we came back and we talked about that. Where we are and where we've been is a structural issue that the council, this council is taking on head-on. I asked the chief in the past, and both of them are here, both of them are twenty-plus years of experience. I asked, how did we address leapfrogging in the past twenty years ago, Chief Dove or Chief Joyce when you were hired? What was your response to me? The departments live with it, right? There was no, and so council, when, we do all of this stuff in a, in a bubble. The compression issues that you're talking about in fire and police are pronounced because they're on a step plan, because we can see those. When we turn around and we hire a new assistant clerk, I then have other people who are in that same pay grade around the entire city who look at that salary, and that creates a compression issue. If the council is saying that every time we hire a employee or we promote an employee, that anyone else who has equal time and grade, not, not just, I know we're talking about fire and police, public safety at the moment, does that then translate to all other employees? If it is, every promotion and hire we do is a cascade, and it becomes uns, it can become unsustainable. That is the structural issue, and we're talking about that now for police. This has not been staff and has not been responsive to council. The council, again, I tell y'all, thank y'all, on behalf of all the employees, that y'all are looking at compensation as an issue. Fire and police, do y'all, do y'all welcome that? Always. The grievance I had the other day, the guy said, thank you for everything y'all are doing. He's not arguing it. He makes too little money. It is a fairness issue, and the council is looking at that. There's no separation between us and what y'all want to do for employees, but we are running into a sustainability issue, where in a few years, you're gonna have all of these police officers who have stepped in, and the range has to then be extended. And when the range goes up on officers, is the range gonna go up on sergeants? Is it gonna go up on the higher-ranking staff? And it, it, that's why the study. And so I'm, I'm with you. I don't know that six months is gonna be enough, Jerry. I, I agree with you all day. I don't know that January we're gonna be ready for that. And so, Mayor, if the interest is to do something now while we do a good study and come back with good recommendations, I would rather, on the floor, propose that. But again, I thought we implemented faithfully what y'all wanted us to do, but we have a structural issue that councils in the past and managers in the past and police chiefs in the past, we live with it. And y'all aren't willing to live with it, and for that, thank you.
All right. Let's see who we had. Councilmember Pro-Tim and then Councilmember Thompson, and Hondros, is that again?
So I'm gonna be real quick, and I'm, I'm just gonna bring a little bit of history to this. I think the last time that we probably did a compression study was probably about ten years ago, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm got, I appreciate your statement, Councilmember Thompson, but I, I do want to give a little bit of history. So twelve years ago, when I first came on council, for chief, you might be able to help me with this, I think there was a waiting list of seven hundred people that wanted to be a firefighter. Everybody wanted to be a firefighter. Their list was like unbelievable, and we were having a hard time getting police officers. I, I remember everybody filling up the room. I remember it all. So I think that's kind of what happened with the fire. There was just such an overabundance of people that wanted to do it. Now, fast forward after twenty-twenty, what they are doing, what pub, what public safety is doing for this city, thank you, because it's just not what people are signing up for like they used to. So we have to, we have to fix this. We have to fix it. So I, it has been talked about over and over and over again, and I think when I came on council, I, are you two the only ones that have step plans? Is that correct? Is it just fire and police?
Yes.
So, and that was a recruitment tool, was what I understood. So I appreciate that we're all sitting here talking about it and that we can stop probably kicking the can down the road. But it has been talked about, and there is a study. Do you know when the last study was done? Was it ten years ago? Was it five years ago?
Yeah, that was back in twenty-twenty-one or somewhere around there. That was, that was for all employees.
For all employees? Okay. So, and, and this one is for fire and police?
Only for public safety, looking at structure and compression.
Okay. I can definitely support that. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want us to make sure we get it right this time. I don't mind spending seventy-five thousand dollars to make sure that we get it right so we don't have to go through this one more time. I think our firefighters and our police department deserve that, and I'm, and I know that they're happy with what they got. But we just want to make it right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hondros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate Dr. Hewitt, what, what you said about, I get the cascading effect, and at some point it becomes unsustainable. However, what's the vacancies in the fire department currently? Ballpark. So the ballpark vacancy number is how many? Yeah. Okay. And what's the vacancies with FPD? Sixty-three. So this is my point, and I'm, I'm for the, the seventy-five thousand dollars for the study, but we gotta get the four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to fix the police right now. I'll make the motion now for the four-hundred-and-fifty thousand to fix the compression of the police and the seventy-five thousand dollar study, or I can make it whenever y'all want me to make it. We gotta fix that. Thanks. Because, because we knew that, we knew that last year before July first, and with all due respect for the firefighters, that was brought to my attention, and I don't know what anybody else knew, like February, March of this year. And I cringe when a colleague of mine or I say, because I try not to speak for council, but you have my word, we're gonna fix this. So we got a motion in a second.
Yeah. So just to keep us consistent with today, there were a lot of recommendations we didn't necessarily wrap into a motion. We parking lot it, because we don't know, we don't know what all we know. So what we can do, I mean, it is, I'm just trying to, this is the discussion phase, and so if, if we're gonna do this for this item, which I do support the concept of, of putting it into it, this was an opportunity to, to hear the things and create a, a list that we would finalize at a later time. So I mean, you can take an up or down vote on it. I just think there's a whole lot of stuff on there that we need to do. Your own words that, you know, as we start talking about the needs. No, no, I, it's not about what you're making the motion about, it's the process you're using to make your point. So you have a motion, you have a second, but the point is, is that it's inconsistent with the other stuff on there. So we can, we can. All right. All right. All right. So it's most by Councilmember Hondros, seconded by Benavente. Yep.
So I was trying to also understand, this study, is this, is this study across the board, or we just talk about our fire and our police?
It's just public safety. This is just public safety. So that means fire and.
Yes.
We don't have the information. But what, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's conceptual.
I, I agree with that.
Than ten thousand per position, so simple math, forty-five positions times ten grand is four-hundred-and-fifty grand.
That's just, that's just the estimate, though. I have no problem with it. I have no problem with it.
All right. Councilmember Benavente, discussion.
Director Clip, you said it was for public safety, and I just want to make sure that we're clear, public safety doesn't include just police and fire anymore, it also includes office community safety. Is that gonna be a part of all that?
No.
Also, I'm asking, I'm just asking. But can I ask?
Well, you can't come in.
I can ask.
For two minutes and ask a thousand questions about stuff you don't even have nothing about.
Mister Thompson, I asked one question. So you can exaggerate it only one.
Councilmember Benavente, you have a four, but they're trying to explain to you.
I would ask Director Clip, if I asked Director Thompson, or Councilmember Thompson, I'd ask him, but I didn't. Director Clip, could you just clarify?
So at this time, since OCS is, is still so new, I mean, we're bringing them in, and there's no issues there with compression or anything like that.
Okay. I guess, I guess maybe my larger point is that when we talk about public safety, we've got to move beyond policing. It's more than just policing. And so people can sigh if they'd like, but we've got to recognize that these kinds of things matter to discuss accurately. So if we're talking about doing this for public safety, then that would include all the above. If we're saying it's just for police and fire, then we should just say that's what it is, and I would be no confusion. Thank you, sir.
I think the motion was, and the guy that made the motion was out the room, so where's he at?
Well, he's green.
Oh, come on, it's your motion. All right. Counsel, we're voting, this is up to four-hundred-and-fifty thousand for police and fire, correct? For the study, yeah. Which was in the budget. Right. Seventy-five was in the budget.
Correct. I'm just making sure we're moving forward with.
Spot picking items, but, all right. Show, uh, Councilwoman vote. See anybody under the police budget, anybody under the fire budget, from my understanding? All right. All right. Counselors vote. All right. Who we missing? Is Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin still on?
Yes, green.
How you doing, ma'am?
Good morning, sir. Green.
All right. Who are we missing? All right. Councilmember Davis, she, she had to be excused, so hers is affirmative. All right. All right. All right. So in the parking lot, we got it. It'll be baked in. Thank you. Hope this fixes it. Hope this fixes it, so. All right. So counsel, I'll, I'll ask for a motion to be excused. All right. Second. I, I can't speak for Mayor Pro-Tim. Well, then she's, she's, she's the first. She did, yeah. Okay. Okay. All right. I didn't, I didn't know she had covered that. You're disagreeable. All right. All right. Counsel, thank you. Oh, that's the previous vote. All right. Show of hands, vote. Second was, uh, Council.
Where are you going?
All right. Who was the second on that? Jen, you got what you want? Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Green, sir.
All right. Thank y'all. Councilmember Harris.
Okay. So we are first by Councilmember Hondros, send. Oh, thank you. Councilmember Thompson, all in favor, let's move to vote, please.
You can always be on here with the mayors.
Cut that off. What you want me to do?
There you go.
Okay. Have everyone that's still here, has everyone voted that's still here? Uh, Councilmember McLaughlin?
Green, sir. Was that for the motion for Mayor Tim, yes, sir.
No, that was, yes, the first one was for the mayor, but this is for Councilmember McNair. She had to leave also.
Okay, green.
Okay, green. So that passes, I guess that's seven to zero. All right. What's next?
Public Safety Technology, sir.
Okay. That's what we've been waiting for. Go ahead, sir.
So again, as we talk about our current public safety network, so when we look at these two maps that you'll see in your slide deck, the, the map on the left is our current public safety network cameras. Those are the ones who are represented by, by those thumbtacks, and you can see the, a concentration through downtown, a lot of our areas, but as you look north on that map and to the west, and even in south, we do not have a lot of coverage right there. So there are two-hundred cameras that are represented there. The map on the right is our license plate readers, where there are sixty. Of course, those are along our major thoroughfares and interchanges that provides data back to us. So when we look at limitations, so right now, we don't have any disaster recovery in place for our current storage, so if we had a loss of recording servers in the event of disaster, say like we had during Hurricane Matthew, that could result in a loss in critical police video data. And, and for example, there are approximately thirty cameras from Festival Park, Lower Bragg Boulevard, Lower Murchison Road, Cumberland, and even Lower Ramsey, that they route through the systel building. So if we had a network failure at that location, it could result in all of those cameras being dropped from the network. When we look at it, we have a single point of failure issues with the current wireless radio network. So if you were to think that there were multiple bridges bringing residents into the city, if you had a collapse of one or more of those bridges, that stops all that data from being able to come in through that. When you look at bandwidth limitations with the current wireless radio infrastructure, if you take a five-gallon bucket of water, and you're gonna try and pour it out, but you won't have to pour it through a straw, you're getting a trickle of that information. There's degradation of the video and limiting the maximum capacity and function of those cameras that we have. So those are some of the, the limitations that we have right there as well. And again, we don't have any integrated AI on our camera systems. And, and as I spoke about during the maps, limited coverage on the, the western side of the town, which is Cross Creek, and then north, west, and southwest sections. So if we looked at a, at a total camera expansion to include downtown and through all of those areas where we do not have coverage right now, you would be looking at an additional hundred-and-sixty-two non-LPR-type cameras, which would be part of our public safety network cameras, and an additional hundred-and-twenty-eight automated license plate readers. The coverage, of course, it shows that that's over five-hundred-and-forty-two sensors citywide, but you would have to understand, some of those cameras have multiple lenses to them. So one camera could, you know, have four lenses, increasing the number of sensors that we would see. Additionally, you would need eleven high-capacity recording servers, which would give us sixty days of retention for that data, additional fusis cores and brief cam servers for real-time and post-event analytics. You know, Mr. Harris, something that you talked about with fusis, and again, knowing that we would have to. You know, Mr. Harris, something that you talked about with fusis, and again, knowing that we would have to, um, expand that as well, and network and server upgrades to support the streaming and the storage for all of that technology. The analytics and the AI component, again, we would be looking at on-camera object detection. And then, you know, when you talk about brief cam integration of advanced search, video summarization and pattern recognition, not only can it take, you know, hours of video and compress it down into minutes, it can go and start to look at instances of saying, hey, listen, at this time of day, we notice that a crowd of people are starting to gather into these areas based on the technology of brief cam. Brief cam can then send us those, uh, alerts, and then we can deploy resources or look at the cameras to see what is occurring in, in that area. Um, infrastructure, of course, you know, spectrum and PWC fiber connections would be needed, um, and potentially new independent fiber cellular links at each camera site, um, to make sure we're getting everything back to the server room. And one of the biggest things is having a dedicated server room with cooling and disaster recovery support. And as I'll go through the next slides, you know, it's like when you're building a home, you have to have the foundation first. And those are the critical components to make that happen.
Okay, chief. If we could. Let's stay right there just one moment, because I do have a couple of persons that popped up.
Well, there it is. Thank you, thank you. Uh, before we move forward, uh, Councilmember, uh, Thompson.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Chief, as I'm looking at your map on the left, uh, as I was speaking with, uh, my chief, Captain DeJesus, we talked about an escape route. And if we have some prep, uh, perpetrators, they're going to use the two ninety-five. Because according to this map, there's nothing on two ninety-five, probably due to the three agencies, the county, Fort Bragg, and the city. What mechanism or what mechanism can you use, install, or buy to capture all those once the DOT puts some of their cameras on the two ninety-five?
So there are additional things that we are exploring of, and you'll see in some of the next ones, uh, of additional LPR cameras that could assist us at all of the thorough, or all of the interchanges along two ninety-five to be able to capture some of that data. Um, actually having a, a meeting this afternoon with staff from our crime information center, uh, with Axon, who we use, um, through all of our body worn cameras, in-car cameras as well. They have a new technology to where it could be posted, um, using other methods of power connection to that. Of course, you know, we do have some challenges as, as working with all of the, the power companies that supply that. Um, you know, whether that's PWC, whether that's a Duke Energy, whether that's, that's Lumbee River. So there's some challenges we have to get through. But we also have some options as we look to meet with one of our current vendors about what we could do along two ninety-five.
Now, is that information, once it does come to fruition, would that information be stored, or would that be part of your public safety video data storage analysis?
It, it would be stored. We would have the sixty-day retention for that. And again, that goes to the build-out of that server room to make sure we have enough capacity for all the data coming in.
I'm tracking. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks, uh, Councilmember Thompson. I don't see any other questions. So chief, you can go ahead on to the next slide, please.
Yes, sir. So the initial target areas would include, of course, that downtown core, uh, which would be the highest concentration of cameras. And then, of course, we would look at our major corridors, and you'll see that in phases that I'll, that I'll speak about in a moment. But of course, looking at Morganton, Riley, Clifdale, Rayford Road, Owen, Bragg, Skybo, and Ramsey as well. And, you know, when you look at the maps, you can see where the gaps are identified in that map. One of the things that we have to look at is what that timeline would look like. You're looking at at least a twelve-month lead time for the procurement and deployment of that. And again, you have to go back to look at the server room, um, working with, um, the vendors who would be responsible for that, working with, you know, expansion of that room. That's a six to eight month lead time. Working with Ms. Willie and her, and her staff, identifying those critical needs that would need to be in that room. So we're looking at six to eight months just to get that room up and running before we'd be able to add to, um, to the expansion of our network. But we also have some other things in place that we would, we would look at, uh, such as our mobile camera trailers to backfill during that timeframe. And just as a note, Murchison Road, that corridor would be delayed until fiscal year twenty-seven because of a, a DOT project where they're going to be widening that road. So we will have to take those cameras down, and then you'd have to work of, of getting them reinstalled as well.
Okay, before you move to your next slide, I do have a couple of questions, uh, council members, well, a council member. But before we go there, are you saying that, um, that we will have no cameras at all during the, that project duration?
Well, of course, we currently have cameras out there right now.
No, I know now, but I'm, I'm, you're talking about the, uh.
It depends where, where they start their construction, uh, of where they start to widen. So if, if, if they get to the point of Murkison and Jasper, then we'd have to make sure that we're getting that camera down. It may not affect additional cameras all at the same time. It could be in stages as DOT does the setbacks for the roadway.
And can they be reinstalled as the phase moves down? So when a phase moves further down, however they're going to do it, uh, you can reinstall that area.
The biggest thing would be is making sure once they do the widening, that they have the permanent utilities in place. If they're going to have poles, or if it's going to be something that goes to underground. If those things are set in place, then yes, we can go back to reinstall.
Okay, Councilmember, uh, Benavente.
Thank you, Dean Harris. Uh, City Manager Hewitt, um, I know that our city attorney isn't here today, but I had asked at a last meeting, um, that we discuss the details of any sort of AI integration or implementation. Um, is that something that we can just make sure is still on the, um, docket for an answer on? Okay.
Hold, hold on one moment, uh, Councilmember. Before, uh, you, you get a chance to do it, let's go ahead and, and can I get a motion on the floor to excuse Councilmember Thompson? Okay, so it has been moved by, uh, uh, Councilmember, uh, Handros and second by, um, Councilmember Davis to excuse Councilmember Thompson. Uh, can we? Yes, sir. Can we get the votes on the floor, please, on the box? Councilwoman, this is to excuse Councilmember, uh, Thompson.
Green.
Green, okay. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Oh, question, yes, sir.
Thank you, Dean Harris. Um, and then Chief Joyce, uh, could you say more about what your plans are? Because I think I saw it here in a couple of places that you said no integrated AI cam, on cameras or systems. Do you know yet what you're looking to integrate?
That would be with brief cam, um, to look at the analytics of that, being able to look at object, to know, of course, that's a person, that's a vehicle. Um, going back to look at, uh, how I would say like if, if, if a group of individuals are gathered. Analytics back, um, to make sure that we are deploying resources if needed to those areas. No, sir.
Typically, when you, like, with, when it comes to brief cam, is, what's the process of you, I guess, making that request for brief cam? Um, is the city manager's office kind of reviewing, um, you know, its, um, efficacy beforehand, or what sort of, is that just done by you guys and?
We did do a test and evaluation with the software. Uh, it was beneficial in helping us to solve a homicide during that timeframe of being able to go back and how it can compress hours upon hours of video, uh, into minutes where that would take, uh, hours of time for personnel and limited with staffing, as we have one sworn personnel inside of our crime information center who has the task of being able to do that right now. So having software that can do that is a force multiplier, um, to us versus having to look at hours upon hours of video, minute by minute.
Yeah, and, and I can see the pros. Um, I guess I want to know what sort of considerations have been done on the cons, if any. I know that you said that ClearView was, uh, AI technology that said, is something that you're currently utilizing?
Yes, sir.
Um, and I had not known that we were utilizing it. I think at the time you said that, you know, you weren't, um, sure just at that moment whether that was something we could say publicly at that moment. I think the city attorney went it back and said that that was fine to be shared. And, you know, just trying to look up some information on it, uh, you know, they just had, um, litigation against them, and they had to settle for fifty-one million dollars, um, ClearView AI biometric privacy litigation, um, because of some, you know, um, issues that, that they were having. Um, we know that ShotSpotter was getting so much, um, negative feedback that they changed their name. Um, you know, I just want to make sure that we're always being wary of government kind of, um, stepping, um, into people, you know, that, that fine line between what we do to protect folks and where we start to potentially, uh, have an impact on civil liberties. I, I just want to make sure that we're having those conversations, because I know our tendency is always yes, 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 when it comes to law enforcement, and I just want to make sure that we're having some level of just check. And if, you know, the check is done and there's no, um, bogeyman in the closet, cool. But, uh, I'm not hearing that we've actually looked at the pros and the cons for any of these existing AI, and then now we're asking for more.
Well, um, what I will do as well, and, um, chief, if you can take this back, and I see our, our CIO is here and the city attorney, um, senior or deputy is here as well. I personally, professionally have, um, have had concerns about drones, about AI, and about all of it as well, um, because of, um, the privacy concerns, but it's the world we live in at the moment. And so I think what you're asking, and I, I think this is where the police chief and, um, I know our IT department legal would be as well, is that when we start looking at new technologies like this, that we actually put a component, not only can we support it, do we have the infrastructure, but are there any other societal issues or concerns that we should be made aware of? I know that's a real big issue in the world of IT now about, um, we have, Adam took a session at a recent thing about ChatGTP and whether or not that's appropriate to use in professional setting. So that would be something that we definitely could do. Um, and, um, I would ask that we take that back and put that with the new chief as well, because that is a concern. And clearly, I hadn't seen that article. If you could send that to me, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so just to clarify, it sounds like there maybe won't be a motion necessary. That's something that the city manager's office can kind of just do on their own to, um, make sure that we're kind of asking those questions, because, you know, I was frustrated when I first came on council and the, uh, chief at the time, you know, could not articulate a single negative consideration for ShotSpotter, which we knew they existed. It was a simple rule search away. Um, and it's not just a matter of, you know, um, it, I think, I think it makes your guys' case even stronger when you can speak to those things and address them, right? There's no reason to say they don't exist necessarily, right? Um, I think it makes us an even stronger department and city service when we can say we're familiar with that potential abuse and look at how we're also correcting for it. So I just want to make sure that we're making the effort to do all that.
Okay, um, Councilmember Handros.
Thank you, Dr. Harris, and, uh, thank you, Chief Joyce. Can you go to the slide, the current camera deployment slide, and then we'll come back to the slide if we can?
Yes, sir.
I can't read the fine print. Is the, the blue is the regular cameras, traffic cameras, and then the red is LPRs, is that right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, can you go back to the slide you were just on, the, uh, cord, uh, focus corridors? I know in conversations with former Chief Braden, on your third bullet point there, gaps were, uh, it's got there north, northwest, west, southwest, and east Fayetteville, but he had specifically voiced concern to me out west, uh, west and southwest. Um, and he was of the opinion that was the greatest need for future cameras and that we needed, uh, a total of four or five of them. Would you concur with that?
And, and I have that presented in some of the additional slides for, for recommendations.
Yeah, because I, I wanted to bake that in today. I, I was prepared to make a motion to add. I know we're looking at all of the, um, cameras as well as the, um, associated IT and, and AI to, to be able to receive and, and process and, you know, view the, uh, the actual footage from those cameras. But, um, and this was before the conversation on the, uh, the youth protection ordinance that we're going to talk about on the twenty-seventh. But, um, at a minimum, I would like to invest in the five cameras in the west and southwest where FPD's data shows they're needed the most for this year's budget, which my understanding is it's fifteen to twenty thousand, um, per camera. So not to exceed a hundred grand, or to spend at least up to a hundred grand.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
Second.
Got a second and a third.
Yeah, we got a second and a third, but there's a motion on the floor. Let us move forward to where we can, uh, make that vote, please.
Green.
Okay, is that everyone? Is it just business? Is it just five of us? Okay, all right, that, that motion passed.
No, I didn't exclude. I, I said minimum. That was the greatest need was west and southwest per Chief Joyce and previous Chief Braden. If we can do them east Fayetteville, I'll, I'll be glad to add that too. Make the motion. We'll, we'll do it right now.
That was what, six? All right, go ahead, sir.
Okay. So if we looked at a complete expansion cost, this, this would be coverage for the entire city and, and a, a additional concentration in the downtown corridor. Of course, you're looking at eight point two million. I know that's probably unreasonable to ask, but to look at an overall complete expansion for the entire city, that's what we'd be looking at. Um, some of the reoccurring costs, uh, when you look at two of those, um, with our A, A ALPR hardware along with brief cam, those figures also represent, um, an estimate for five years. So you would not have to worry about that after year one for a period of five years, and those, of course, taken away about a million dollars, uh, for that. But a complete expansion would be eight point two million. The greatest need in.
Hold on, hold on one moment, chief. I'm, I'm going to make sure I'm understanding something correctly, Mr., uh, city manager. As we start looking at these, uh, uh, costs and, and proposed costs, are these particular items, uh, moving to go to the parking lot? Or, or can we move forward to move for approval on this, uh, on this budget item, not knowing where we're going to be able to get these? We're not just looking at, uh, one-time general fund money to cover this. So is this proposal going to the parking lot?
It, 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 it would. Um, I would, um, just take a moment too and say that, and as to chief, these, um, items were not in your request. This is not, none of these items are things that the police department requested this year. They were things that council identified, um, as part of the special meeting. One of the considerations, and then thank you for this, Dr. Harris, for giving me, asking me this question so I could expound on this. Even if you were to fund this, and it was a one-time cost, it's still the maintenance fees and issues like that. It may be the staffing to, to process that, but again, we can roll that in. We would have to go back and work with our IT department and the vendor to be able to say that if you allocate it one-time funding, when would that funding get used? Because we couldn't only roll out so many so fast with the backbone and the network and getting attachments on poles and things like that. And so a more favorable motion at, in parking lot that the council could make would be, um, we want to, um, we're supportive of this. We wanted to add it to the parking lot. And as we talked about earlier, about thirty-six to ninety plan with the new police chief coming back and saying, based upon that, chief, we, do we have money in the budget that we could allocate? Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for initiatives on cameras once the new chief talks with the staff and IT about what could be implemented in the next twelve to sixteen months. And then we would say, add this into the CIP-ITP for full funding of, is that number eight or nine million dollars?
Eight point two.
Eight point two.
You're not even ashamed by you, chief, just to come in here and throw eight million dollars down.
I was like, I said it earlier this morning. I said, he's going to look at me and say, you've lost your mind.
Yeah, but, but again, I think that, Dr. Harris, that's the way it would be, is that you'd say, we will find support in this, and we're asking that this be folded into the ITP-CIP, but we would like to have money available in the upcoming fiscal year to get started on it. That would be a, but a, a parking lot item, would it not be, um, a Kimberly? That would be what would give us the number and the direction to move forward the budget.
Yes, sir, and that's how I would like to personally, uh, support this. Um, since we're just getting this now, just due to all the conversations we were having on technology, uh, for FPD and probably even for our fire department. And since we have, uh, lost so many council members, I, I think it would be best if we just, if we're making any motions to move forward, let's, let's be making those motions to move forward to the parking lot and not as a move forward. to the parking lot and not as a move forward to our overall budget.
And just to kind of piggyback off of what Dr. Hewitt said, you know, even with what would be approved or later, you're looking at a year from now before any of those things are in operation with a 12-month lead time. It would be a year from now before those things would start to be in place.
Thank you, sir. Proceed.
So again, you know, you're talking about the additional cameras out west, things like that, but one of the first things that truly needs to occur is that server room. If you remember in the previous slides, we don't have any disaster recovery in place. So even with what we have, if we had a major incident and lost that, we lose all that data. So the server room is first and foremost, one of the things that is needed. We've identified those critical areas with Ms. Willie and her staff to say, this is what we need to make sure we're functional, that we have the recovery systems in place. When you look at that, that is 1.6 million dollars. However, if you look in one of the base solution costs, we have the mobile cameras for 120,000. That would give us three additional mobile camera trailers that until we have that server room up and running, that we could deploy to any location throughout the city to give us additional coverage in the event that is needed. That would increase our number to four because as we already have one mobile camera trailer in place, it'd give us four to be able to operate throughout the city as needed until we get the server room expansion in place. There's a lot of things that need to occur with that to make sure we have the backup, the cooling, everything that is needed to handle the expansion.
Hold on a minute, Chief. Guys, if you all would.
Now, we have a question for you.
Okay, we're gonna, I'm gonna come to you on the question, okay? Go ahead, Chief, finish your statement, then I'll call on the council members.
So, and again, the most critical need right now, before you do anything, is to get that server room up to speed.
Right. Councilmember Davis.
It's a question for, I guess, the city clerk. Councilmember Benevente is geared to be excused, and we just have to have six at the beginning of the meeting to have the meeting.
That's correct. That would be.
Don't get excused, I need your approval.
I know, let's do it right now.
That was my question. Thank you, city clerk.
Yep. If we open up with the quorum, we can continue to move forward, correct? And it would not just be moving as totally information items? Yes, sir.
So downtown expansion, this would just be solely downtown. Again, some of those reoccurring costs would come off after year one because with FUSIS and BriefCam, again, those are five years, so you're looking at 4.1. But after that, it would, you'd look at 3.1 as they would come off. Phase one downtown expansion, so if we looked at it in phases, that would be half of the proposed downtown cameras and then adding an additional 23 cameras and eight LPRs along the Morganton Road corridor, 18 cameras and six LPRs along the Yackin Road corridor, and you see the total figures there. And I believe in the final slide would be phase two downtown. Again, you could either do the remaining half of downtown, but then that would look at 13 cameras and five LPRs along Clifdel Road and 12 cameras and three additional LPRs along Riley Road.
Well, sir, thank you. We asked that at one of our meetings on what technology that the police department needed and what those costs may be, and we really, really, really want to support that. We're going to shoot all of those items, these sheets or this presentation over to our parking lot and hopefully when we have a much fuller room of council members, we can kind of see which way we're going to go when we get to that date. Do I have any questions? Is this, any fresh questions from anyone? Where are we now, Mr. City Manager?
Were those all of the public safety items that we had programmed? What you have on your agenda is parking lot? Or was there something else to come before the council today? I don't see it on the agenda.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the items that we received in our recommendation budget.
Are you here for this?
But it's not on the agenda.
Do you have a PowerPoint? Okay, okay.
No, we're talking.
You're right. I got you.
And I will propose this question. I'm with everyone. Council, you all feeling okay? Since we seem to be dwindling down, I think we're getting ready to lose at least one more council member. Would you all want to continue for information with these items? Ready to proceed? Okay, sir.
Yeah, we are killing hogs in here again.
Oh, it's always cold in here. Ain't nothing living. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, so we came back before you at the April work session with our tiered rate analysis and impervious area study. One of the questions that council had was some information on our fee credit manual that we offer to non-residential ratepayers. So here's just a couple bullet points on that. We could probably go into a deeper discussion on this, but this is really the highlight. So commercial facilities can get a detention retention credit up to 30% reduction, 10-year storm events, 25-year, 25-year storm event, 5% on top of that. There's also a water quality credit of up to a 30% reduction. For that, you just have to treat runoff from the first one inch of rain and the discharge of the one-year, 24-year storm event has to be less than your pre-development discharge. And then for those industrial sites, so those would be industrial sites that have an individual or general MPDS discharge permit, such as the airport, they could get up to a 20% reduction as long as they have, again, the valid individual general permit and they follow a formalized stormwater pollution prevention plan. Credits are cumulative, so you could get up to an 80% reduction in your stormwater fee if you're an industrial site. You'll see I have three bullets in red. For you to get an infrastructure permit for stormwater on a development, you have to meet those bullet points in red to even get permitted. So anyone that comes in and develops, does a development for the city, they essentially could get up to a 55% credit reduction if they perform their annual maintenance, get it inspected, submit an application, and so on. So we do make developers aware of this when they come in through the TRC process. But again, there are very few commercial developments that take advantage of this fee credit. Is there any questions on this before I go into the other slides?
I have none, sir.
Okay. So the rest of these slides are slides you saw back in April. Just bringing them back as a refresher, this shows what our projected revenues are, the percentage of accounts of ratepayers, 92% of the ratepayers are residential, 8% are commercial. Breakdown of the percentage of revenues and the percentage of impervious area, you can see it's about the same, 60-40 split. Again, we went through this with other phase one communities in North Carolina that have a tiered rate for your residential property owners. And then Columbia, South Carolina was our other phase one community we looked at in South Carolina that is adjacent to a military installation. We did have three tiered structures that we presented to you back in April. All of them varied in the impervious area of the building, so it's just kind of where that range fits. This was the tiered residential rate structure, number one, which would generate an additional a little over a million dollars in revenue. You had residential tiered structure two, where you had about 26% of the residents paying less than $7 and about 31% paying more. This was about $500,000 in additional revenue. And then there was residential tiered structure three, which would generate almost 1.3 million dollars in additional stormwater revenue. You would see your tiered one, which is 77% of your residential properties, would continue to pay $7. Your higher impervious area residential properties would pay more on a monthly and annual rate. It is worth noting, we presented the same presentation that we gave you guys in April to the Stormwater Advisory Board in May. They did unanimously vote to recommend tiered structure three that is before you right here. So your SWAB recommended this rate structure. So those were the stormwater slides.
So, any questions? Councilmember Handros. Yes, sir. Councilmember Handros.
Thank you, Byron, and thank you, Dr. Hare. The tiered structure three is the one that council had. I thought we had voted on it, but when you presented this to council last time, that was the one we favored the most. If we were to act on this today, can we put it in the fiscal 2026 budget? Or would the soonest we can do it, the 2027 budget?
We would have to correspond with the county tax office to see if y'all voted on it today or this budget cycle, if they could include it in the property tax bill that goes out in August, September. September. So we, yeah, they should. But we, we could work that out with the county to try. If you wanted to move forward with it, we would implement it as quickly.
Without this, without this tiered structure, if we stay with what we have, so for residential, I think it's $7 a month. What is the budget? I don't, I know it's in the book, but you may know it off the top of your head. Funding all the salaries and the operations that we currently have, is there any, I won't say surplus, but would there be any funds left in this Stormwater Enterprise Fund?
I'd have to go back and check. I don't recall. We had that, we had that slide in the original presentation in April. I don't, I don't recall.
But it's certainly not going to go down to zero.
No.
Like, we don't run that close. I would like to make a motion to move the tiered structure three forward for fiscal year 27, not 26. If anybody's willing to support that. And then I have another stormwater motion after this.
State that again, boys.
The tiered structure three, which is on the screen. So instead of everybody paying all residential, no matter if you have 100,000 impervious feet or 1,000 impervious feet, instead of everybody paying $7 a month, this would be tiered based on your impervious area. Or not impervious area, but your, the impervious area of your structure anyway.
So it's based on?
It's more equitable. Right. I thought we'd already passed it, but I just feel like if we don't pass it, we're never going to pass it. So I'd like to pass it today so it'll go into effect next, next year.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Handros. Who was it seconded by? Okay, Benevente. Before we move forward, let me put a question on the floor for myself. Mr. City Manager, help me to understand, I do understand where the request is in tier three, where depending on what your, your-
Impervious.
Build, yeah, right. For your particular home is, is the amount that you would be paying according to tier I'm asking the question. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, sir. What is proposed and shown on the screen that if you fall into tier three for residential, you would pay 252. Byron and Budget Staff, the current rate under the current structure for residential properties is what?
It's $84 annually.
$84 annual. So you're going to, under the residential tiered structure rate, no one would see a decrease in their rate. But there are some people who have more impervious surface in tier two and tier three, and I don't know if we know, and 1% of the parcels, so there are how many parcels?
You're probably looking at about 700 parcels would be paying.
700, 700 parcels in the city residential would pay tier three, and then my quick math, reverse counting on my toes, tier two would be about 3,500. Don't correct my math.
Yes.
Don't correct my math.
And then 77% would not see an increase at all.
Not see an increase. But that, but I think the recommendation or the motion is to not implement it for the current year, but put in place all processes necessary-
For 27.
For 27, so that we would bake it into cake for next year's budget recommendation.
Okay.
27, yes.
Okay. And so are there any additional questions on this item? Anyone?
I do. Yes, sir. Thank you. So just for clarity, because I think we've had this conversation when I was one of liaison for the Stormwater. Was this in regards to just the parcels, the percentage? So if you have one residence with an increase in parcel or more parcels, it will go, it'd be based off of that percentage for the price?
Did she say price? Yeah, stormwater fee would go on.
I mean, why not price, but, well, you know what I meant, well, fee.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Right, it's just depending on the actual percentage of the parcel.
Yeah, if you remember when you were the liaison and I was on the Stormwater Advisory Board, we were talking about this tiered structure then. That was probably five years ago.
A few, yes, a few years ago because we felt that it was unfair for individuals with a smaller parcels to pay the same percentage as those with a higher parcel.
Right. This would be more equitable.
Just for clarity.
Because some would not change, correct?
Correct.
77% wouldn't change.
Okay. All right, there's a motion on the floor.
Green.
Okay, that motion passes 6-0.
And then my second motion with Stormwater, I would like to earmark in this year's budget out of the Enterprise Fund, the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. We get caught up, and rightfully so, the Stormwater has two parts with the quantity and the quality. We get so focused on the quantity that we don't focus on the quality. So I'd like to earmark 1,000, 100,000 out of the Stormwater Enterprise Fund budget for the quality side. And I will, you know, put that on staff to come back with recommendations, but I know in the past in the Stormwater Advisory Board, we had looked at netting and different contraptions to catch litter and debris on the outfalls. You know what I'm referring to, Byron? So I'd like to earmark 100,000 for the quality side, and staff can make recommendations and come back to council on what specifically those would be. But I think we need to work on our quality side of Stormwater in addition to our quantity side.
So let me make sure I'm understanding, Councilmember. So you're saying that, that funding would sort of like go into a holding?
It would just earmark 100,000 of the total Stormwater. I think under the current Stormwater fee, we get what, about $10 million generated in the Stormwater fee?
It's not, not quite 14 million.
14 million. So out of that 14 million, that's all Stormwater? The same way we, we put funding for the Drainage Assistance Program out of the Stormwater, this would be 100,000 for, basically to improve the environment and control litter in our Stormwater. So sometimes you see these outfalls and you'll see litter in the streams. There's netting and different contraptions that can, that can catch some of that and take it out of our streams.
What funding do we, what funding do we put aside now for what you're speaking?
None. I don't think it's ever been done, has it, Byron?
Is this, so is this anything?
I'll text you a picture.
Yeah, yeah, well, please. Is this, I mean, I know I'm familiar with those, for example, I call them the filter bags.
Filter bag, yeah.
That go around our storm, our storm drain systems, and I'm familiar with that. But we're not, we're actually allocating funding to do that. This is not like, and I'm asking the city manager, this is not like the funding that sometimes in lieu of, that's put to the side. Okay, well, you know where I was headed. You already checked your head. Any more questions on this? And please send me that item. And what do you think of that, Mr. City Manager?
Of all the folks in the room other than staff, I think Councilmember Handros is probably expert on it. And so rightly, if we don't have something that focuses on the quality side, I think it's just that we've been so focused on other activities. But clarity from council that you want us to additionally spend money on that, I think is, we support.
And will you all come back to us on what those specific details would look like of what they are? Because the only thing I'm familiar with is what I just stated, unless there's some form of a actual water filtering system. I'm familiar with the, I call it the filtering bags that go, because I have some on some of my properties right now. I don't know anything else.
Yeah, to be clear, this wouldn't filter like PFAS or anything that's small. This would- would filter like larger trash.
You're talking about trash and stuff?
Yes, sir.
You're gonna send something to me?
Yeah, as soon as I find it, I got a bunch of pictures.
Are you any familiar with it?
We would, we would, we would bring back council an approach and plan for that.
Okay, all right, okay, so the motion is on the floor by Councilmember Handros, second by who?
I wanted to fund that in the 2026 budget out of the stormwater enterprise fund. I wanted that earmarked.
Because that was, that was where I was getting ready to head was, as I stated earlier, a couple of motions earlier, that we were taking these items and moving them to the parking lot unless there's a vote to do it otherwise. And there's only what was left, five?
Well, even if we earmark this out of the stormwater enterprise fund for stormwater purposes, staff still needs to bring back and we would have to approve, council would have to approve their recommendations.
Well, there's no second on the motion, so if the maker of the motion doesn't mind, could we put that earmark amount of money and what it's for toward our parking lot, parking lot agenda item, please?
I'll take it, thank you.
All right, let's move on. And I think, well, I don't see anyone coming up for that, and I think we all can kind of absorb this ourselves and look over on the parking lot item and some of the proposals. Okay, there is, because those parking lot items came from council members. So do we need to have a presentation or discussion on this, or is this something we-
That's what I was gonna ask y'all, does anybody want me to read it to you?
Yeah, I mean, no, ma'am, we can read ourselves. So if we could, that was the last item. What I would suggest to everyone is to please look over on the parking lot items. I'm going to know that we'll probably be receiving these to be added in addition to the ones that we have now at our next budget. When would we start having a full discussion on parking lot items and if we can or cannot do them? Because just because they're on the parking lot, I do know that doesn't mean that it moves forward.
Right, I want to get with the staff, and and my hope is that we'll do it at your next meeting. I think there are some items that we're planning to bring to the council at the 29th, but and we need to come up with an approved way from council for you guys to say, this is what we want to add to the budget above what's recommended, and you've given us guidance on some of those key items already, above what's in the recommended budget, and we have some strategies, as I mentioned, that there was a little bit of flex that we could find in the budget to fix some, to address some of those ask of council. But there are clearly some others that on the parking lot that council would have to prioritize. And then there is also the question about how do you reconcile ads with, there was some discussion early on about reducing back to a revenue neutral tax rate? Those, and so we'll give some thought with Kimberly and the team about which question do we ask first, but-
Thank you, sir.
Once we get all of that down, then I don't know if y'all want or feel more comfortable doing dots, so you want to do, raise your hand, we'd have to keep it legal with the city attorney and with the clerk, so we could follow the the votes or the informal votes of council to come up with lists, but then we would have to reconcile that and bring it back to you guys for-
After you redo the budget.
Yes, yes, sir, so at least two more meetings, but we will send you out, along with the parking lot, we'll send you out the suggested topics for the next work session, and of course, any additional questions you have, please send those in.
And we will also get a new parking lot list with our new stack of information? Okay, so that sounds good, I have no problem myself if we raise hands or do the dots like we've been doing over the years. Can I, if it's not anything else, I would like to receive a motion to adjourn. So move, we'll see you all on what, what's the-
The 27.
27.